Start now. It was muted. Sorry.
Hello, people of the Pacific County. Today is the day after Christmas, so we have the committee meeting. We're live streaming it for you in that address in case someone decides to have to zoom. You have another option. Over in the corner is another livestream.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first up, Board of Health. I just want to let everybody know that doesn't come to our meetings usually that this is not the public comment you're here for. There will be time, but it's not under this agenda. So public comments for Board of Health. Is there anyone here that has a public comment for Board of Health?
Didn't hear.
Public comment from Board of Health.
Oh, okay. Yeah, can't hear real well back here.
Okay. I'm gonna assume there is none for Board of Health, and we're gonna close public comment. Move on to consent agenda, please.
Move to approve consent agenda, item number one. Subject to adequate budget considerations from all county commissioners. And I will second that motion.
All right, paper.
Aye.
Aye. Item B, regarding the local board of health.
Move to approve the appointment of Commissioner Jerry Doyle as chair and Commissioner David Tobin as vice.
Please speak up.
I move to approve the appointment of Commissioner Jerry Doyle as chair and Commissioner David Tobin as vice chair effective January 1st, 2025.
And I will second that motion.
Hey, all right, paper.
Aye.
All right. That closes Board of Health, and we will now move on to the Board of County Commissioners. When we start this, it's not gonna sound like there's public comment, but there is. Just give us a second here. First up, at 10 o'clock or as soon thereafter as we can get to it, there will be a public hearing regarding adoption of the fiscal year 2025 budget. So, moving right on. Items regarding general business. Consider adoption...or item one.
Move to adopt resolution number 2024-056 in the matter of formally creating a Department of Corrections as provided for under RCW 70.48.090 subsection 4, to be known as Pacific County Jail Services and other matters related thereto, to become effective 12:01 a.m. January 1st, 2025.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, so with that, having a motion and a second, we will now open it up to first, our county administrative officer would like to provide a statement, then we will move into public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hello, everyone. My name is Paul Blackett. I am the county administrative officer. I have some prepared remarks I'd like to make. Please be patient. It will take a while to get through everything. It's gonna be at least 25 minutes.
Can you speak up so we can hear you? Please use the microphone. There are no...
There are none.
Right. There are no microphones in the room. Again, I urge people...
They're for recording.
The microphones here, everyone, are for recording for the official record of the county, that we are recording this meeting right now. The board has three mics. We have a mic here that can pick up the public. So again, I'll do my best to speak as loudly as I can. Right. So, to the Board of Pacific County Commissioners, as the county administrative officer, I am employed by Pacific County to assist the elected Board of County Commissioners with the oversight of county operations within the board's authority. After a great deal of reflection, I have submitted an agenda request form for your consideration at this morning's open public meeting that includes a resolution in the matter of creating a Pacific County Department of Corrections in accordance with the laws of the state of Washington outlined within the revised Code of Washington, the RCW, specifically RCW 70.48.090 subsection 4. If this matter is approved, the operational control of the Pacific County Jail shall be removed from the authority of the Pacific County Sheriff and placed under the authority of the Board of County Commissioners. In this letter, I will attempt to outline my rationale for submitting this proposal. As the general public is likely aware, two tragic deaths have occurred inside the Pacific County Jail within the past two years. The first of these two deaths occurred in December of 2022, which was the final month of previous sheriff Robin Souvenir's term of office, which expired on December 31st of 2022. The general public is likely unaware of the administrative efforts that were carried out by the sheriff's office, both by the former as well as the current sheriff's management team in the aftermath of the first jail death. I will attempt to clarify those efforts from my perspective to the best of my ability. In December of 2022, less than 24 hours after the first jail death, two members of former Sheriff Souvenir's management team appeared at the courthouse annex building in South Bend to inform the Board of Pacific County Commissioners and the Department of General Administration, which oversees the risk management division of Pacific County Government regarding the incident. During this first conversation, three individuals were notified in person by the sheriff's office: me, the county administrative officer, Marie Guernsey, Pacific County Human Resources and Risk Manager, and Lisa Olson, a Pacific County Commissioner. On that day, it was brought to my attention that only a single corrections deputy was working in the jail when the inmate passed away inside the facility. The employee in question was immediately placed on paid administrative leave in order to conduct a proper investigation regarding the circumstances surrounding the death. Multiple telephone calls were placed to outside law enforcement agencies to help Pacific County in conducting an external investigation. The Washington County's risk pool, the WCRP, was immediately brought into the fold. In summary, the management staff working under former Sheriff Souvenir took the appropriate steps in those initial moments after the jail death in December of 2022. In late December of 2022, just days after Christmas, Sheriff-elect Daniel Garcia alerted the entire management team of outgoing Sheriff Souvenir that they would be replaced effective January 1st, 2023. Shortly thereafter, in early 2023, Sheriff Garcia and members of his new management team met with Pacific County Risk Management to discuss the construction of a "unexpected fatality review" in accordance with RCW 70.48.510, which is a statutory requirement in any case in which the death of an individual confined in the jail is unexpected. In accordance with the laws of the state of Washington, a county Department of Corrections, if one exists, or chief law enforcement officer, in this case, the sheriff, shall ensure that the unexpected fatality review team is made up of individuals who had no previous involvement in the case. Being that the Board of County Commissioners had not created a Pacific County Department of Corrections at that time, all aspects related to the unexpected fatality review panel fell to the sheriff as the chief law enforcement officer of Pacific County. The state of Washington outlines strict timelines regarding this procedure. Specifically, upon conclusion of an unexpected fatality review, Sheriff Garcia had 120 days following the fatality to issue a report on the results of the review unless an extension had been granted by the chief executive or, if appropriate, the county legislative authority of the governing unit with primary responsibility for the operation of the jail. As stated previously, being that the legislative body of Pacific County, which is the Board of County Commissioners, had not created a Department of Corrections at that time, the responsibility to issue said report was under the sole authority of the sheriff. It has now been more than two years since the first death occurred in the Pacific County Jail. To the best of my knowledge, the unexpected fatality review has not yet been completed nor has the report been issued. Rather than take accountability for this inaction, Sheriff Garcia's managerial team during an open public workshop on December 18th, 2024, insinuated that the Department of General Administration told the sheriff's office to put a halt to the review in an effort to "save a few zeros" on a potential settlement. I have never uttered any such words nor have I ever said anything that could have been interpreted to mean what the sheriff's office implied. To the best of my knowledge, no such words were ever uttered by any of the Pacific County Commissioners nor by anyone working in the Department of General Administration. On June 19th, 2023, the Pacific County Courthouse was closed to the public due to the Juneteenth holiday. That day, I received a call home from a sergeant in the jail alerting me that the courthouse was inadvertently left unlocked and that citizens were walking around inside the building. This caused a burden on corrections staff as they had to repeatedly leave their post to inform citizens that the courthouse was closed because of the holiday. I called maintenance staff within the Department of Public Works and directed them to immediately lock the doors to the courthouse, which they did. I called the jail back to inform corrections staff that the doors were now locked and to apologize for the inconvenience. I expected to hear the sergeant's voice on the other end of the line but was shocked that the person who answered the phone was the employee who had been brought back, who had been placed on paid administrative leave the previous December. Sheriff Garcia brought the employee in question back to work with full knowledge that they were still on paid administrative leave and being investigated in relation to the death. Shortly thereafter, I alerted the Pacific County Risk Manager and called the jail from the Risk Manager's office. A sergeant answered the phone and inquired if the employee in question was working a shift that day in the jail. The sergeant confirmed this to be true. I instructed the sergeant that the employee in question must be immediately escorted off the premises. Within an hour, I received a telephone call from Sheriff Garcia, who disagreed with the action I took to have his employee removed from the courthouse grounds, insisting that I had no right to do so and that I should never do it again. I stated to Sheriff Garcia that I took the appropriate action and that I hoped he would never put me in that position again, due to the immense liability he had caused Pacific County by bringing back the individual who was working alone in the jail when the death occurred and noting that the employee was still on paid administrative leave and being investigated in relation to the death. Sheriff Garcia attempted to justify the decision. I stated that there was no valid justification for bringing back the employee in question, especially when considering the circumstances. On June 21st, 2023, the employee in question was charged with felonies by the Lewis County Prosecutor's Office following an extensive investigation of the death in the Pacific County Jail in December of 2022. The employee in question eventually pled guilty to one misdemeanor count in a plea bargain to settle the case. The family of the deceased later settled a wrongful death lawsuit against Pacific County for approximately $2.9 million. In early August of 2023, King Five News reported on a story regarding Sheriff Garcia in which he indicated that the Pacific County Sheriff's Office would stop responding to questions or interview requests from the Chinook Observer, which is the official newspaper of record in Pacific County. The sheriff was quoted by King Five stating, quote, "I no longer want to give them little snippets of something I've said and then try and convince the people I meant something else," unquote. The board and the Department of General Administration vigorously disagreed with the sheriff's position on this matter. I perceive the sheriff's actions as an attempt to control the public narrative regarding his office while filtering out any disagreeable opinions. From that point forward, the cooperative relationship between Pacific County Risk Management and the Pacific County Sheriff's Office deteriorated at a rapid pace, despite repeated attempts by the Pacific County Risk Manager to reach out and keep the lines of communication open with Sheriff Garcia. In an attempt to mitigate the escalating risk, the Pacific County Department of General Administration and the Washington County Risk Pool offered, in a letter issued by the Board of County Commissioners in August of 2023, to pay for a dedicated attorney that Sheriff Garcia could consult in real time. To the best of my knowledge, Sheriff Garcia has never formally accepted the offer. Sheriff Garcia has repeatedly expressed in a public setting that his military background gives him sufficient experience to handle risk management within his office. While I certainly value, respect, and admire Sheriff Garcia's dedication to our country through his military service, he seemingly fails to understand that having a separate risk management division which reports to elected officials under a different branch of county government is part of a system of checks and balances that is intended to protect the county and support its elected officials, not fight them. Offering Sheriff Garcia an attorney through the Washington County's Risk Pool in lieu of him feeling compelled to utilize his own personal attorney is intended to protect and support the sheriff, not fight him. The Department of General Administration has continued to try and foster a cooperative relationship with Sheriff Garcia despite rumors to the contrary in the public domain. One of the most important attempts at collaboration is the county's ongoing attempt to secure continuous jail medical services. In the two years that have passed since the jail death in December of 2022, this has proven to be a difficult proposition. In late 2023, the sheriff's office worked together with the Department of General Administration during preliminary discussions with a medical professional under consideration for these services, which was helpful and greatly appreciated. Ultimately, those negotiations failed to yield a viable contract. In the subsequent months, Risk Management continued to search for a solution to this critical issue. During their open public meeting on April 30th, 2024, the Board of County Commissioners approved a temporary appointment of an advanced registered nurse practitioner, an ARNP, to provide jail medical services beginning on May 1st, 2024, with expenses to be paid from the Department of General Administration's budget. The individual in question had experience providing similar services in one of our neighboring counties. The temporary appointment has since expired. Risk Management is still searching for a full-time solution for jail medical services, contrary to rumors circulating in the public. In early October of 2024, another tragic death occurred in the Pacific County Jail. This was the second death inside the facility in less than two years after having zero reported jail deaths for at least a quarter of a century. After the most recent death, the Chinook Observer reported that Sheriff Garcia opted not to bring in an outside agency to investigate and instead planned to conduct the investigation internally. Pacific County's Risk Manager, on behalf of the Washington County's Risk Pool, has repeatedly requested jail security camera footage from the date of the incident in order to prepare for potential litigation in this matter. It has been more than two months, and to the best of my knowledge, the sheriff's office has yet to provide the security camera footage pertaining to the jail death. Risk Management has attempted to work with the sheriff's office on this and other critical issues related to the recent jail death, but Sheriff Garcia has largely failed to provide meaningful updates. Risk Management has effectively been kept in the dark regarding the status of the investigation. The sheriff's actions have likely increased Pacific County's risk exposure significantly, but financial implications of this jail death on taxpayer dollars are not yet known. The public must understand that multiple in custody deaths, regardless of which sheriff was in office at the time of the incident, have a profound impact on the insurability of a government entity as a whole. Even in a theoretical situation in which everyone involved did everything by the book to the letter of the law, a death inside a jail carries with it enormous risk to a county government. When an elected sheriff refuses to actively cooperate with Risk Management in such a situation, a county's risk exposure increases. There are counties in the state of Washington that have closed their jails after settling an in custody death. I refer to recent events in Garfield County. Other counties, while facing their own unique challenges that are not entirely dissimilar to those we are currently experiencing, have already completed the transfer of jail operations from their sheriff to their Board of County Commissioners. I refer to recent actions over the past few years in Benton and Clark Counties. Just a few weeks ago, Clickatac County Commissioners passed resolutions moving control of and responsibility for their county jail from the sheriff to a new Clickatac County Department of Corrections. The Yakima County Jail has been managed by their commissioners since 1993. What all of this demonstrates is that there is a clear precedent in the state of Washington for counties to operate their jail outside the purview of the sheriff. The matter of creating a county-level Department of Corrections is bigger than any one elected official. The county already settled a jail death lawsuit for approximately $2.9 million. The financial impact of a dish of seven-figure settlements has the potential to force the outright closure of the jail, just as it has elsewhere. The loss of our insurability would devastate public services for virtually every office and department in Pacific County Government. The issues I have addressed within this letter make it clear that the board must take action or risk the dire financial consequences. I believe we cannot afford to proceed with a status quo. Regarding the path forward and in conjunction with the actions I proposed this morning, I recommend that the county sever its employment relationship with jail inspector Michael Parker, with Mr. Parker's last day of employment being December 31st, 2024. The county would like to offer Mr. Parker a three-month conditional severance package equivalent to 100% of his salary plus benefits to account for the financial hardship that a loss of employment might cause. The jail inspector position is a non-union, non-represented management position, so I must note that no such severance is required. However, I believe this is the best and most compassionate approach for the county to take, and I would like to thank Mr. Parker for his service to Pacific County during these past two years. I believe that Sheriff Garcia, while almost certainly well-meaning in his efforts, may have spread the jail inspector's official duties too thin. In a small rural county such as ours, there are times when management staff must "wear many hats" and perform several disparate functions that larger counties might have the luxury to delegate to other staff or even hire additional employees to perform. I believe the individual tasked with the oversight of the jail is one of the most important in all of county government and is not someone whose duties should be diluted. Before announcing my preferred candidate to run the jail, I must dispel the rumor that circulated in the public over the past week, which is that I intend to run the new Pacific County Department of Corrections myself. That is fundamentally untrue and was never under consideration. In my role as county administrative officer, I have supervisory authority over the directors of all departments that serve at the pleasure of the elected Board of County Commissioners. That goes for the Departments of Community Redevelopment, Public Works, Public Health and Human Services, et cetera. The hierarchy within the new Department of Corrections, which will be known as Pacific County Jail Services, will be identical to that of the other departments under the purview of the board. I'm proposing to hire someone with experience working at a high level in a correctional facility. With that being said, I am pleased to recommend that Pacific County hire Mr. James Byrd as the new director of Pacific County Jail Services effective January 1st, 2025. Mr. Byrd has a distinguished career in public service, having worked in the Grace Harbor County Jail for 18 years, with more than nine of those years as a lieutenant. Before his nearly two decades in local government service, Mr. Byrd had a decorated military career. I'd like to welcome him to the team, and I hope his expertise in corrections can help alleviate any concerns that the public and corrections staff might have regarding the leadership of the jail facility. To address other comments and concerns that have been brought forth in the public over the past week, to corrections staff, I sympathize with the concerns expressed by staff members within the Pacific County Jail. I understand that a family dynamic develops over time with your coworkers and supervisors, and that changes to this dynamic can be difficult and unsettling. I have read the letter signed by corrections staff dated December 19th, 2024, and I am sorry that you believe you've been neglected by the county commissioners, general administration, and risk management. I fear you may have been misled, perhaps unintentionally. Virtually all of the issues referenced in your letter that supposedly "fell on deaf ears" received full support from the current members of the Board of County Commissioners and current staff within General Administration. In some cases, your supervisors may have expressed internal support to you but then failed to follow through and submit the proper request to the board, making it appear that the county commissioners were somehow opposed to the idea in question. In other instances, the issues that supposedly fell on deaf ears within General Administration were actually matters that we assisted with or even brought to the sheriff's attention. For example, when General Administration was made aware of the full extent of the issues with the jail locks and doors, we acted immediately and treated the situation as an emergency. Jail staff and the public at large may not be aware that Sheriff Garcia's management team was unsure how to submit the $450,000 grant referenced in your letter, so they asked me for help. I happily oblige and sat with Sheriff Garcia and his management staff in the board's conference room and helped them complete and submit the grant, and it was a great team experience. I sought no public credit at the time, but it feels appropriate to mention my role in the process considering the circumstances. Additionally, you may not be aware that prior to receiving confirmation that Pacific County would even be awarded the grant in question, I proposed that the board commit $1.3 million of general fund money to pay for this critical project, even if the county failed to receive the grant funding. The board approved my request. Without this $1.3 million, the project doesn't happen, even if the county had gotten the grant. The board made a significant commitment to address a legitimate public safety issue, but it appears that someone neglected to inform you about this key piece of the puzzle. It is difficult to hear the continued public outcry that the board doesn't value public safety when such huge expenditure commitments have been made. This has been a similar refrain in which key pieces of information about the board's demonstrated financial commitment to public safety have somehow been glossed over or ignored. Risk Management identified the need for new cameras in the jail, and the board took immediate action to approve the purchase. Risk Management heard the jail's concerns regarding plumbing issues in the facility, and the board again took action. The board heard the jail's proposal to contract with a new food service supervisor and gladly approved the proposal. We fully supported all of these issues. Apparently, someone painted a picture suggesting that we were against you. I am truly sorry for that. Regarding the collective bargaining agreement, on December 17th of 2024, the Board of County Commissioners ratified a new collective bargaining agreement between Teamsters Union Local Number 252, representing non-commissioned officers, which includes all of the corrections and civil staff currently working for the sheriff's office. In my role as county administrative officer, I helped negotiate this labor contract for Pacific County, which resulted in a significant and well-deserved pay increase for all bargaining members. The proposed creation of a Pacific County Department of Corrections will not have a negative impact on the salary, benefits, or insurance of any corrections staff as bargained in this new contract, though I do expect that the county will need to iron out certain administrative details within the agreement, such as references to the word sheriff throughout the document. Again, since all salary, benefits, and insurance details have already been ratified by the Teamsters and the board, no one will go backwards with regard to compensation within the bargaining group. Regarding cost, I've heard rumors that this proposal will cause a dramatic cost increase in 2025. That is not likely to be the case. In fact, in 2025, I believe that budgeted expenditures for the jail will slightly decrease compared to budgeted expenditures in 2024 by tightening the reins in certain categories. I make this statement as the individual who compiles and creates the Pacific County budget, which I have done every year since I was hired by the Department of General Administration in early 2011. Regarding priorities of the Board of County Commissioners, much has been said in the public domain over the past few days about the priorities of the board, specifically regarding monetary commitments to public safety during Sheriff Garcia's term of office. I detailed several prominent expenditures earlier in this statement, but I believe it's important to disclose the bottom-line financial figures for the sheriff's office as it might be illuminating for some. During former Sheriff Robin Souvenir's four-year term of office from 2019 to 2022, actual jail costs were relatively stable, ranging from a low of $1.63 million to a high of $1.79 million during that four-year span. In 2023, which was Sheriff Garcia's first year in office, actual jail expenses rose to a then-record high of $2.16 million. Budgeted expenditures in 2024 have grown to $2.57 million, with actual expenditures likely to approach the upper end of that budgeted spending limit. As noted earlier, fiscal year 2025 budgeted costs in the jail are likely to see a slight decrease in an effort to better control costs. While patrol and general law enforcement is not a topic I have addressed in detail throughout this letter, the board often hears the same concerns from the public regarding supposedly inadequate funding. During former Sheriff Souvenir's four-year term of office, again, spanning 2019 through 2022, general law enforcement costs fluctuated from a low of $1.63 million to a high of $1.85 million in that four-year span. In Sheriff Garcia's first year in office, actual law enforcement expenses rose to $2.47 million. Budgeted expenditures in 2024 have grown to $2.77 million. Anticipated budget appropriations in fiscal year 2025 will likely exceed $3.1 million. I am compelled to note that staffing levels within all divisions of the sheriff's office are at or near all-time highs. I understand and respect that Sheriff Garcia has advocated for additional deputies, which he has every right to do. However, I believe it is clear, as evidenced by the financial figures detailed in this statement, that public safety has been a clear economic priority of the Board of County Commissioners during Sheriff Garcia's term of office, regardless of any real or perceived friction between the board, the Department of General Administration, and Sheriff Garcia. Regarding state involvement, the Washington State Department of Corrections is not involved in the takeover of the Pacific County Jail. Quite simply, the phrase "Department of Corrections" is the official terminology required by the state of Washington when creating this kind of county-level department. We understand this is confusing, which is why the county is proposing to name the new department Pacific County Jail Services. Regarding privatization, Pacific County has no plans to privatize the jail. I am honestly not sure where that rumor got started, but there is no truth to it whatsoever. Regarding court appearances and limited commission for corrections, Sheriff Garcia has made some excellent points regarding the general duties of the sheriff under RCW 36.28.010 subsection 5, which states that the sheriff shall attend the sessions of the courts of record held within the county and obey their lawful orders or directions. In Pacific County, this duty has traditionally fallen to corrections staff. There is a practical solution. Sheriff Garcia may simply offer a limited commission to corrections staff in order to fulfill the duties they have traditionally performed. This may be done in the spirit of Team Pacific County This may be done in the spirit of Team Pacific County, which is a phrase I've heard quite often from Sheriff Garcia in his first two years in office. I believe now is the time for those words to be put into action. This would address the concerns voiced by Sheriff Garcia regarding extra duties that patrol deputies believe they might need to absorb from corrections. If Sheriff Garcia refuses to offer this limited commission, which would be unfortunate, the county will pursue other avenues in an attempt to ensure that correction staff is properly certified and that no excess burden is placed on patrol deputies. In summary, two tragic deaths have occurred in the Pacific County Jail in less than two years. The sheriff has failed to consistently negate with risk management despite the escalating risk within the jail. While I believe that Sheriff Garcia is a sincere and direct person, and that his decisions were likely well-intentioned, the risk of continuing to operate the jail under the office of the sheriff has become untenable. I understand that this proposed action has not been popular among supporters of Sheriff Garcia. The citizens of Pacific County elected the Board of County Commissioners to make difficult legislative decisions in the best interest of all citizens within the county, regardless of the popularity of those decisions. I implore the Board of County Commissioners to create a Pacific County Department of Corrections as provided for in accordance with the applicable laws of the state of Washington, as I believe this is the only viable way to keep the Pacific County Jail open while mitigating the ever-escalating risk associated with the facility. If this resolution fails, I fear that the Board must seriously consider closing the Pacific County Jail due to the reasons I have outlined herein. Thank you, Eleanor.
Thank you. All right. Um, we will go into public comment, but Sheriff Garcia, you are the elected official for that department, and I'd like you to vote first, please, if you said that you would like to speak.
Yep, I will, uh. I will conclude after everybody's spoke their piece.
Okay. Um, we're gonna try and do this in a orderly fashion. Um, are there, are there, is there anybody outside that was not able to get in? Is there anybody else in the hall?
There's people outside. Can you open the door?
Well, let's just, um, as, how many people are outside?
Four, five.
Okay. Um, if there's only a handful, if we could let them in, please. And I would like to say also that Mr. Plankton's statement will be available on the website. It'll be, I believe, on the front page. Um, I understand that it was a bit hard to hear. Uh, we want everyone to be able to see the reasons, um, that were presented to us for this. It'll be available, if you would like it emailed to you, we can do that, but it'll be available for download in print on our website, um, as soon as we get done with this meeting, whatever time that is. Uh, so we're gonna go around the room to my left, and, um, as we go around, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand, and I would like you. Oh, I'm sorry, Amanda.
I just would like to make a note, um, so just with, I'm Amanda Bennett, I'm the clerk of the Board for the County Commissioners. You guys probably got some emails from me over the weekend. Um, so if you emailed, I did respond back, um, as of three o'clock yesterday, um, I did respond back to emails that I had received. So I know a few of you shaking your head did receive those, so as of December twenty-fifth, uh, twenty twenty four, up until three o'clock, like I said, I did wanna make sure that you guys did get the receipt, um, of that, so if you sent it after three o'clock, just be aware, I may not have received it yet. Um, it's been busy this morning, but I will return those. Um, also, just wanted to make a note that, um, the, there was, I know that there was some information, uh, passed around that, um, if you submitted a written statement, I would read that into record, which is incorrect. Um, I just wanted to make note, though, that the citizens that submitted emails, um, during the, during the time, um, up until three o'clock yesterday, that those names of people, um, they will be submitted into the official record as stated in the emails I returned. Um, the names of those individuals, I'll read, just so that they know, um, officially that they were received as well. Uh, Terry Pettit, Bonnie Lou Cosby, Karen Stevens, Monica Garrett, David Alsup, Hillary Trustee, Angie Martin, Brad Stevens, Erica Hazen, Bruce Hazen, Rick and Daria Garrig, Bonnie Walker, and David Ryle. Um, I just, like I said, I just wanna make sure that you guys know that we have received them. Also, if you sent it directly to me, I did forward it to the Board of County Commissioners, so, um, I just wanted you guys all to be aware of that, um, with the email situation. Um, also, in regards as to public comment, um, we do have, allow up to three minutes per citizen to speak. Um, your three minutes obviously cannot be donated to somebody else to speak longer than three minutes. Um, as Commissioner Olson stated, we'll kind of go around the room, and then we'll go to, um, Zoom, and we'll call out your name and unmute you as we go. Um, and yeah, so I just wanted to let you know, as those in the room, you'll see too, will have a, a timer up there that, um, the deputy, uh, clerk of the Board, Mindy Young, will actually have that up there for us to kind of just track, so, again, appreciate you guys all coming, just wanted to brief you on that before we started.
As clarification, are you saying that those are the only people that emailed?
No.
No, we received emails that they, um, if they requested theirs to be read into record.
They are in the record.
Yeah, but. Yes, everything, um, submitted for this meeting, and just so you know, all the emails and comments that you have submitted and writing will be part of the official record today, so I just wanted to let you guys know.
And I would like to say that, um, I read everything out through about six-thirty last night, and then scanned the ones that came through this morning. Um, and I was down here, and I'm assuming you guys have gone through them as well.
I also, I also read them.
Okay. I'm gonna call on folks that raise their hand, I'm gonna ask you to state your name, please. Um, usually, we're a little flexible on the three minutes, but because there's so many people and want everyone to be able to speak, we're gonna be pretty, pretty strict on that. Um, so, sir.
Uh, Robert Waltzme, um, I'll keep it as fast as possible. Some, uh, observations. Would the death have been prevented if the management had been under Corrections Office of either of those? I also worry about we're taking, adding one more step of bureaucracy between the citizens and the jail. Right now, we have recourse through a recall. Now, there'd be a recourse for a recall through a commissioner and hope that somebody got fired or whatever. Uh, do the commissioners really wanna be more liable for what happens in the jail? If it's not the sheriff, then it's gonna be you. Uh, do we not have insurance? Isn't that what it's for? Worried about lawsuits in the future, or you're not worried about lawsuits for changing things? And then lastly, there's been some mention about the cost of increase for the jail. I don't think I have to remind everybody that we're living through inflation. My costs have gone up forty percent easily. So to compare apples and apples, you really would have to have inflation-adjusted numbers, and I find that, uh, a little disheartening that it was placed there for us. That's my comments.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, yes, I'm Tracy Ray, and I'm under Sheriff Ray's wife, so, and he was a sergeant for many, many years before this, and I've also worked for Pacific County as a custodian. So my question is this, risk management, right? They're gonna take on, here's the thing, every other job I've had every year, where you have to do sexual harassment type, you know, um, computer programs, you have to do, like, there's MSDs throughout, I always had a first-aid kit that was perfectly stocked, that was not at the building that I worked. I mean, there was one MSD, but the first day I cut my hand, it wasn't stocked. Also, I was instructed by my supervisor to get on top of the roof by myself, take that ladder, and change the air filters, change all that by myself. How is that helping the constituents on risk management? They aren't doing their job, and I know this as a person that worked there. I mean, so I just don't see, I could understand if we said for constituents, we're gonna hire another company and take that liability, but how is this helping us as constituents? And as far as the police force, I'll tell you that having more staff is a heck of a lot better than what it was. There is so many times, my honey, was called every night. You're having somebody that's tired, working during the day, getting called every night, getting called out. How is that not a liability issue? Having more employees is important. It's important for our safety, it's important for their safety. That's all.
Thank you. Sir.
My name's Joe Nantoli, I did submit a written, and, uh. Everybody's against change. You know, we've been going along fine, 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 and all of a sudden, there's a disruption. But apparently, in this case, what I'm objecting to is the way this came about. The man was blindsided. I mean, obviously, this has been on your mind for quite some time. I mean, you've already sourced an individual to take over. You've already gave, gave, given the individual on the Sheriff's Department a, you know, you're gonna be out of here. You know, so this does not come over, you know, you just woke up next morning, said, oh, let's do this. It's been on your mind. Why hasn't he been in the loop? That's my questions to you. It's. It seems very, uh, underhanded, blindsiding.
Yes.
Yes.
There's enough people here. We voted for this man, we did not vote for you. We voted for this man, we put our trust in this man and his department, put on that desk, put on that gun, and protect us. How is your Department of Corrections gonna prevent a death? Answer me that question right now. I have seen no time-management studies, I've seen no cost studies, nothing, it's just all in your head, and you're presuming it'll do this, you're presuming it'll do that. Where's the studies? What I suggest, table the situation, let's sit down and talk about it, open it to the public. And go on.
Well said. Very done. Thank you, sir. Yes.
My name's Erica Hazen. I'm a wife and a mother of three boys. I'm a surgical RN at Ocean Beach Hospital, and I just serve the Lord and this community in a variety of roles. So I'm a volunteer firefighter, I'm a South Pacific County tech rescue team member in surf and cliff entities. Um, I'm also, most recently, a reserve deputy for Pacific County Sheriff's Office and an integral member of the SAR team. Um, I am here in support of the corrections deputies in Pacific County Jail to remain under the direction and management of Sheriff Garcia and Commander Parker. The people of Pacific County voted for Sheriff Garcia as the elected official and running the jail was part of what he was elected to do.
Yep.
To take this responsibility away from him goes against what the people voted for and is unjustified and unnecessary. This hasty proposal and pending vote from the county administrative officer and commissioners to create a Department of Corrections under the management of James Byrd came as a shock to many. As county officials and elected commissioners, you are all here, like us in the law enforcement community, to serve the people. This is not what the citizens of Pacific County voted for. This proposal could cause a significant negative economic impact and detrimental regression of progress within the Pacific County Sheriff's Office, including affecting the patrol and corrections deputies. In conclusion, the leadership needs to remain under the direction of our elected sheriff, Daniel Garcia, to continue the forward momentum, ongoing improvements, and progression that are currently underway. I personally have never seen such a cohesive team with the highest level of integrity, with an intention and focus on a culture of safety. Thank you for your time and for taking my words to heart in your upcoming decision. The voice of this community matters. Yea.
Mr. Here.
My name's Dewey Dare. I don't do that much, you know. Sorry. So I'm gonna address you as an interesting, not as people, as friends, okay? This is BS. Do your job and make it go away. We elected Daniel Garcia knowing what his job was. No more garbage behind our backs, just make it go away. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. My name is Greg Grecart, retired merchant master, disabled veteran, and rather recently bus driver in the county. I was set back to learn that we, as a community and the commissioner, could not work through this issue as adults with responsibilities to our county. To me, it seemed, I'll use that phrase, underhanded. It seemed impossible to get beyond where we were. So I did some studies, and I found out that those counties that have reverted or changed to having a separate Department of Corrections don't always succeed. In fact, more have failed than have succeeded. Sheriff's departments, once those changes have occurred, do not want it back when it's offered back to them by their commissioners. It has changed so badly that they don't want to have that responsibility. Now, what's happened in the past, people keep referring to what's happened in the past, I'm not concerned about what's happened in the past now, I'm worried about what you're doing for our future.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Cody.
My name is Robert Cody. And like this young lady, in the past, I was a twenty-five-year Pacific County and a Raymond Police Reserve. This deal with the sheriff goes back, clear back to Mr. Benny. He proposed, they proposed to take the jail away from him, he stood his ground, the commissioners had common sense to sit back and figure it out. This first death, in my own investigation and talking with direct people involved, was totally unavoidable because of lack of communication between the presiding physician not getting the correct treatment to that patient, which cost the county two point nine million. And now you've got a suicide. Nobody in this room can walk by that jail and say, that person is suicidal, and fix it. It ain't gonna happen. Sheriff Garcia and his crew are doing an excellent job, and I'm like the rest of them. We elected him under knowledge of what it comes to, and I personally have been involved. In fact, this jail has been antiquated for over fifty years. Why haven't you put money towards updating all the services? From what I understand, Mr. Garcia is trying to update into real time, and somebody's holding for it. And with all due respect to Mr. Plankton there, his, he must be chairman of the hate community, is all I can say. This keeps me, what he's saying, that's it. Do your job.
My name is Mike Gleason, I'm a Pacific County, a Pacific County resident.
What, your first name, your name, please?
Mike Gleason.
Gleason.
G-L-E-A-S-O-N. And I speak from some experience of over twenty years law enforcement, over twenty years with Washington State Department of Corrections, having retired last July first. My last post was at Stafford Creek, where I was the chief investigator of the Investigations and Intelligence Unit there. Complicated job, Department of Corrections. I can't count the number of correctional deaths I investigated personally that happened either at our facility or went out to do critical incident reviews with a team on almost every facility in the state. You can't, you can look at causation, you can look at mental state of the offenders, and you search those out, and you try to do better. It doesn't stop deaths from happening. I think, I think frankly, if we've only had two deaths at Pacific County over the last few years and previous to that, I think we've been very fortunate. Secondly, what I see, this infrastructure bought with the jail itself, the, I support the sheriff, I also know Mr. Byrd very well, having worked with him previously when I was with Stafford Creek Correction Center. Great guy. I think he'll try to do a great job, if that's the case. The problem is the expense and collateral expenses that you haven't accounted for, they're gonna be sizable, and this gentleman was right as far as collateral expenses and problems at other facilities who've tried this are huge. And some of these places, some of these jails are continuing to try. And some of these places, some of these jails, are continuing to try to make this work, even two, three, four years down the road from when they initially did this. That's all I have to say. I'll keep it as brief as possible.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Russell House. I'm a Pacific County resident and a former naval intelligence officer. As such, my responsibility was to analyze data, judge whether that data was, took one source of data as truth. Everything always has to be verified and you need multiple sources. And then, we would advise command. I've heard Mr. Plackinger's, I was surprised by a lot of what I heard during Mr. Plackinger's address. It seems to me that he's done an excellent job of looking into the situation from the perspective of the general administration. Sheriff Garcia has looked at things from the perspective of the county sheriff, okay, who's been working to correct some deficiencies that he's seen. And that's probably the difference in the budgetary figures, not just inflation, but if you're going to have a professional organization, you need to train them. Training is expensive. It's time, money, updating equipment that's old or worn out is also very expensive, okay? There are, I'm sure, positives to both positions. What my concern is, what I see is an adversarial relationship between administration and the sheriff's office. That is not in good service to the citizens of Pacific County. Instead of throwing out the baby with the bathwater, okay, I think we probably, yes, Mr. Plackinger, you've done a lot of research. You've been working on this for quite a few months. What I, as a citizen, would have preferred to see was you working with the sheriff, okay, from the start, in what you were considering. And again, yeah, I'm going to read through your presentation again because, well done. But...
That's time.
Have, okay.
Were you almost done?
Yeah, almost done. I would, I would have preferred that you worked with them. Take the, you know, take the emotion out of it, because yes, everybody's gotten very emotional about it. Take the emotion out, okay, and work together. That would be my preference.
Thank you, sir.
Barry Peterson, North Pacific County resident.
Terry?
Barry. So, first of all, thank all of our elected officials that are here for what you do, and all the deputies and everybody else that's here. So, this could be a great idea, but like many others have already said, the way that it's been presented and the way that it's been thrown out there, it just kind of reeks of the discord between our elected officials, on the council, the sheriff, possibly even the administration. You guys have to find a way to work together for us people. We elected you all to take care of us and to do the best thing possible for us as a county in general, and as a whole. The safety concerns of the people on the north end, you know, they're great. We have, we're kind of the forgotten area down there, all the way to the county line, and since Sheriff Garcia's taken over, we've seen some more deputies down there and we're grateful for it. As I say, the jail, you know, I relate to him. I spent a week there one night several years ago, in terrible shape. I don't know how many of you have ever actually been in the jail or taken a tour of it. I'm glad to hear that there's some refitting going on. But, again, without us being able to even, you know, look at the information, great statement, I'd love to see it in writing so we can go over it and, you know, then give us a chance to give you some real input about the facts and figures. That's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Is there anybody kind of behind the TV that I can't see or that would like to speak? Hi, Kelly, from North Pacific County, a non-publicary citizen. So, I just really would like to, just the gentleman over here, he had said something about this knowledge that you guys have been thinking about this for a while, because you wouldn't already have someone in place to take the position. And I, as a citizen, just sit here and think to myself, how is it possible that we're finding out, like, a couple weeks before Christmas? And I just think that you, as our, as our representative, this should have been brought about. We should be able to have a vote on this. We should at least have a clear picture of what's going on. And, I mean, that's just, that's just my take. Everyone else has already said that a couple different times, but I guess I just want to repeat it to make sure that that gets in the brains of the citizens. Because I think that that was, that was a bad thing that just took place. And I feel that it was wrong. And I also would like to have some figures to see what this new department is actually going to cost. You kind of said a little bit about it, but you said something about the overrun of the sheriff's office, which was coming off of COVID times and everything was up in the air. And so, then we have a, we actually have some renovations going on. So, how much actually is the legitimate cost that has been overrun? And I'd be interested in seeing that. We obviously know that there's more law enforcement present, at least in North Pacific County. I, as a person, know that, because I've seen it over this last run with the sheriff. And I think it's been fantastic. Thank you. So... Thank you. Is there anybody else? Anybody else back here?
Hi, I'm Anne Marie McNary. I just have one thing to say with respect to the sheriff not wanting to speak to the Chinook Observer. I support his right to make that decision. I do believe that people's voices are misrepresented in the paper.
Yes.
That once the original statement is out, any redress of that is already out the window.
That's right.
And I just want to bring that up. I have no problem with his stance on that. He is my full support.
Thank you.
My name is Lucas Markdollar. I'm a lifelong resident of Pacific County. And I just want to make you very aware that I am a Pacific County Sheriff's Deputy currently. I grew up here. I left for six years. I was in the U.S. Air Force. I was a munitions technician. Came back, got a lot of jobs that really go along with munitions around Pacific County. And so, went to work at Warehouser, worked with a lot of people, even on this room, with their families at least. And I feel like I have a pretty good idea about what the majority of people kind of feel as far as like just a regular, regular guy. Was Warehouser for a bit, decided, you know, this isn't really benefiting the people. I was used to kind of a structured environment, like the military, and self-sacrifice. I have three core values in the Air Force. Service for self, excellent so I did, and integrity. Integrity comes first. But, there's times where people try to challenge your integrity. And I've never let that, never let that get to me. I left Warehouser, which, forgive me now, went to work at Raymond Police Department for about a year. In my time there, I was a police officer for over about 3,000 residents in Raymond. And after some discussion, I decided to leave and come to work in the sheriff's office. Currently, there's about 24,000 residents in Pacific County, and I get to cover all 1,300 square miles. I think it's awesome. So, basically, the one I'm trying to get to, I realize there's only three minutes today, I kind of overlooked that. I can talk all day. But, you might see me out there in Francis, North Dove, wherever. I'm probably the deputy C stopping somebody on the side of the road. I believe in traffic safety. I believe in the three Es: enforcement, education, and engineering. I've got a lot of tickets. I probably educate more than anything. But, but I really do believe in it. I'm gonna be the next EVAOK instructor for this county. We can go into PIT certification training, which is actually one of the intervention techniques in case somebody decides to take up on us. Why this is important is honestly, Commander Parker has taught me a couple things, not as just a manager of a jail, but just as a peer. I've had several DUIs I was involved with. One of them that I had a lot of questions about. Commander Parker was willing to give me vital feedback and educate me on some of the things I could probably do in the future, but also some of the things to look for. He didn't need to do that. He's a commander of the jail. He's not my direct supervisor. But he took the time to do that. I really appreciate that. Honestly, I think if the separation between the sheriff's office and the jail go away, I'm not only losing Commander Parker, but I'm also losing a family.
And that's time.
Well...
He's almost done.
I know, but I still have to announce.
We're out there, at the range, all the time. I know firearms is a hot topic. One of the things that really kind of stood out to me is, I understand the Pacific County Sheriff's Office firearms program is difficult, but, but in the case I need to use a firearm to defend myself or one of you, I want to make sure I know how to use it. And the Corrections deputies that train alongside me, I know their top-tier training is being informed. It's cold, it's rainy, yeah, it's uncomfortable, but at the end of the day, who do you want out there, you want somebody that doesn't know how to use a gun? I don't know. I guess I'm just a little frustrated with this whole thing. I'm close with everybody probably in this room, and to see the kind of, just, the problem it's created is, I wish it would just go away and we could just remain in the Pacific County Jail and in the sheriff's office.
Thank you for your service.
My name's Michael Carmel. I'm an almost 20-year resident of the county. I have Air Force, veteran, not retired from the Air Force, but served four years, three overseas. I became a journalist early in my career with a degree, and covered police, fire. I also did a lot of civics coverage, commercials, councils, et cetera. And this is one of the most animated meetings I've ever attended. It's clear what the people feel, but along with the rancor, along with the aggravation, I see an enormous opportunity. This is the chance for you to make it work, for you to shake hands, for you to try to understand one another better. We all know that Sheriff Garcia has made a lot of progress, and there was a need for a lot of progress. And there's a lot more to be made. And Paul Plackinger, your ability to analyze and to go over things is incredible. Now, let's put it all together and put this behind us and make this a great thing that it can be. Let's solve the problem instead of creating a new gear artist where we're going to be starting all over again. Let's, let's fix it.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Ann Murray. I am a medical and psychiatric nurse practitioner and addiction specialist. My husband and I are the only board-certified addiction specialists, not only in this county, but in this region. I was dismayed to see that my resignation letter from providing psychiatric services in the jail has been weaponized against Sheriff Garcia.
Right.
I voiced some concerns, and very legitimate concerns, but none of them are attributable to decisions that he has made. And I want to be very, very clear about that.
Thank you.
The primary criticism I hear about Sheriff Garcia is that he doesn't have a law enforcement background and he doesn't know what he doesn't know. I would submit to you that other people here in this room, while doing their very best, are not healthcare providers, don't know the system, they don't know what they don't know. I'm very concerned about the need for a cohesive system of care, healthcare, in the jail, because we're talking about siphoning off county money to create another department when we desperately need to put money into our healthcare in the jail so that it is no longer fragmented. It is very important that we have teamwork for correctional work at all and also in healthcare. The work is too difficult to do otherwise. And if you don't have that teamwork, you end up with correctional officers who have horrible post-traumatic stress disorder going out on disability, and healthcare providers as well. Plus, people get physically injured. Sheriff Garcia and Mike Parker have created a cohesive team in the sheriff's department, as evidenced by the nods of agreement I saw when the letter from the correctional staff was read at the town hall meeting Monday night in Long Beach. I want to remind everybody that the people in the Pacific County Jail are our brothers and sisters, our sons, our daughters, our parents, our friends, including the correctional officers, not just the inmates. And many of the inmates are there because they've done stupid stuff while intoxicated or were, while experiencing mental health crises that have led to their criminal behavior. And while law enforcement in this county is exceptionally good at de-escalating situations, still, people end up in jail. And they need our help, they need a cohesive healthcare system. Not the Kmart version, but at least the Macy's version.
And that is time.
So, it is important to have healthcare systemized, systematized in Pacific County Jail for the safety and also to reduce the risk. We need to seek accreditation through the National Council of Correctional Healthcare. It's not cheap in terms of upfront costs, but it's much cheaper than the multimillion-dollar settlements that come about otherwise. So, I don't fault anybody in this room in particular. I do request that reasonable negotiations be done to put local healthcare providers in the jail. People who, who work as a team, both psych and physical health, and people who know our county and its people and its resources. I thank every one of you for being here and thank you for listening to me.
Let's go back and keep going around. That would be the most efficient way.
Is it me?
Yes.
Okay. So, my issue is that NACEL Youth Camp is closed.
I'm sorry. Could you say your name, please?
Oh, Kim Fleishman, sorry.
That's okay.
My issue is NACEL Youth Camp is closed. And Tim Moss, who's your representative, is now building a new facility in Aberdeen. And I think about the risk to Pacific County, the transportation and the expense there. I totally disagree with what went down. Also, I think most of our problems are caused by an inadequate jail. And whatever you do to it, it's not going to be serviceable. It's just too small, and we needed a centralized jail, which I would have agreed to using the NACEL Youth Camp for a centralized jail. I wish there was a plan forward on that. And then, we just don't have enough police to do the job correctly in this county. So, before you do the playing game, look at the jail facility and look at the number of police you have. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm a long-time resident of Pacific County. My wife and I are both retired. We live in NACEL. I've listened to a lot of things here this morning. The one thing that just caught my attention was that there was a letter... The one thing that just caught my attention was that there was a letter that was supposedly drafted and, and signed by all the corrections officers and it was read in Long Beach.
Yes.
Is, is, is that letter on record?
Uh, I can read it if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to hear it. My wife and I are business owners in Ocean Park. And I wanted to just mention a few things. One was just the mention of the, the people and the animation here. And this is the day after Christmas. How many people are out of town? Uh, you know, I mean, I can't imagine you would have had to have a different facility. In fact, we're already over the fifty-five. There's a sign back there, so.
Until the sheriff.
If we're going to, uh, if we're going to have a discussion on this at a future meeting, I think it'd be advisable to have a different location. I want to say, you know, we have in our business office there at Bay Avenue, in the past years have had trouble with, uh, some local troublemakers, you know, that wander the streets. Um, we very rarely saw a deputy anywhere else in this area. If I did, it was usually because they were the security officer that was up in Surfside, so I had to drive to there. But, uh, so since, uh, Sheriff Garcia has taken over, that is, I mean, we just don't have the problem. It's, uh, we see the deputies around, the presence makes a difference. And I will admit, I am one that, uh, you know, if a vote comes and it's got anything, you know, in our, in the ballot that has anything to do with, uh, funding and raising taxes and spending more money, I, I can't remember the last time I voted yes on something like that. I'm pretty much across the board, you know, that there's enough police there. I regret that our sheriff's department isn't set up more like a hospital where it has its own funding and its own, uh, you know, funding to vote on. Because, you know, you mentioned, uh, you mentioned the budget and the increase in that budget. I for one, that's a, that's a budget item I would vote for. So it has made a difference and we needed, uh, the difference in this county, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everybody. My name's Jeannie Wile. I'm, uh, almost a seventeen-year, um, county employee, retired in twenty-twenty. And, uh, I just feel real compelled to say a few things about how I've dealt with some things in the past with the county and not had, uh, the results that we were looking for. I worked at the health department, um, team, because I'm not sure how it went through the chain of command, but the, it failed. We had an employee in the South County Building, and I'm not saying names or departments or anything, but it was brought to the attention of the management team that we had in my office at the time, that there was someone drinking on the job because they were, we were finding, um, fireball travelers in the garbage cans in the ladies' room. The, the person that did the, um, cleaning at the time, it wasn't crazy. She didn't think anything about it and was throwing them away for I don't know how long. And then, when I started finding them, I took them to my supervisor, had a meeting with the other staff that also had some concern. This person was chewing cinnamon gum on the job to cover it up and driving the company vehicles and whatnot. And the, the way it was solved was an email went out by my supervisor that said, "It has been brought to my attention that someone is drinking in the building and just remember you can't drink on the job and you can't drive the company cars." That to me is, was the lamest excuse and through the hands of the dent of cards out there. So the county really had no recourse. That was the one thing, one of the things that made me quit my job and not retire. I did not retire from the county. I was a disgruntled employee. Um, I believe that there's a conflict of interest with any vote that has to do with the board against the sheriff's office at this time until litigation is resolved. And that's not to hurt anybody's feelings, I'm just, that's my personal feeling. What would have happened in the elections that year in the open?
Yep.
And who would be sitting up there at this point?
Yep.
This group of people are very adamant that they like what Sheriff Garcia is doing. I had never met him until we had the open forum at the county building or the high school auditorium, yeah, or middle school auditorium in Awaka. But, because I purposely wanted to talk to him about my pet peeve, the sand ridge during the school week when there's kids standing next to the bus. And there's no one there to run traffic. And they're, I'm being passed at eighty, ninety miles an hour because people don't know how to budget their time or whatever. And he and I ended up talking for like hours about what he's done for us at this point. I feel this very candid, uh, because of the way this has come up.
And that is part of it.
And it has to be right now and a done deal, and I think, in my opinion, and it sounds like I have a lot of backers here that feel the same way, that a lot of the negativity against the sheriff's office, not only with the administrative staff, but disgruntled ex-employees, the ones that lost their jobs when he was elected by us. And disgruntled employee, other people out there that used to work for the county that had issues that made them quit as well. Um, I'm now retired, but that was twenty-twenty. But it still was so mismanaged that jumping into this, you guys have had a lot of time to look this up and do these things. We haven't seen it at all. And the people, we the people are saying, "Don't do this today."
Right.
And the gentleman who was talking about, I don't, if my taxes, if I have something presented, yeah, there's a lot of times I think, "Poor, poor, poor." But one thing that I do know is that it's been a long time since we've had a sheriff in there that has tried to do stuff, and that's why the budget's gone up. He's trying to correct the crap that has been not done. And that's nothing against, he just, he's just a stronger and for the people man. And I want to support.
Yeah.
I'd just like to clarify just one item. I believe, Mr. Plackenjer, that the reason you included the emails dedicated to the budget work to show the several of the, um, statements that you had gotten were that we, we need to fund higher and that, that we are, the sheriff's office is as highly staffed as it's been in many, many years. And I, it's not, it's not a gotcha, it's a, we are trying to fund.
Sandra Reed, uh, Pacific County resident, property owner, taxpayer, voter. As commissioners, you are taking the role of fiduciaries to the residents and citizens of this county. And you owe us accountability and, um...
An apology.
Well, and, uh, and, uh, you, you owe us, um...
Clarity.
Clarity, yes, thank you. You, and, and we haven't had a chance to examine any of this. Not only has the sheriff been blindsided, we've been blindsided. And the most disturbing thing I've heard here today is that this board is going to make the decision, this board wants to make, regardless of what the citizens of this county want. And that is the most disturbing thing that I've heard come from this board today. So that's what I have to say.
I'd like to clarify, we not needed that.
Well, now this like, was stated by Mr. Plackenjer today, yeah.
I just want to clarify, Mr. Plackenjer presents to the board these where we all get to make our own decisions. That's all I want to state.
Thank you.
This is not a done deal.
Thank you.
Behind the scenes, we all have our individual say.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing that from our District Three Commissioner.
Hi, my name's Johnna Cochran. I live up here on Central Avenue with all the black-eyed Susans in my yard. So if you want everyone to come over and stop by and say hi, hi. I absolutely used to hate law enforcement. I, I grew up in a reservation and, you know, Cochran always messing with me. And so I always had this, I hated it, you know, to get a, my hands would sweat soon as I'd see. This man here has changed my view of law enforcement. He shares with everybody about everything, the transparency. I learned that, transparency. I noticed that whenever people even spoke, if people are speaking here, I noticed that our board kept here, they couldn't, did I run it? I, I feel like my voice is still not being heard, you know? I heard about this through our sheriff, not through you guys, through the sheriff saying, "Hey, this is what's going on, everybody. This is what's happening. Look, me and all you two are in the back room doing dirty dillies, in my opinion." It's like, and see, I get this look, that's a look of disrespect. And that's the look that I get from a lot of youth people. Now, I'm a disabled veteran. I fought for my country. I fought for people I agreed with and people I didn't agree with. People like, just let me serve. And I come back with the world of knowledge. The world of knowledge is scary. I learned how to throw bombs. I learned how to be intimidating. I don't have to be that with our sheriff. Or his, I love to say, "The pooties." Anyhow, that's all I want to say. And I want to say thank you to my sheriff to be here and have my back. He runs the rat traps, you know? Can't let the cats in charge of the rat traps, you know, they say. But they're the rats.
Yeah, um, everybody here has pretty much hit on what I intended to say in one form or another. I just want to bring up one point. While you were in your opening statement, you stated these, these lifesaving measures that were presented to you and now were in the letter by the corrections deputies that you guys were forced, you guys were on board with, but it was never officially proposed to vote on. My question is, why wouldn't one of you have introduced it much like what you are doing now if you thought that was truly something that would serve the county? Why did you sit on it? And it appears that you just held it to use it as an argument and a point to the agenda that you guys are attempting to cram through without the voice of the people.
Yeah.
My name is Ron Robbins and I have a question. If this wasn't considered a done deal already, why is item number thirty on the agenda? That is making James Bird the director of the county jail.
I would like to address that. I want a recall.
Let Jerry speak. The issue is that if many of you have not been to a Board of County Commissioners meeting, what is said in front of an agenda are all requests. The agenda requests come to us, we make a motion, those are seconded. If they pass, the other item would have to be on the agenda to approve. So there are no approvals, no approvals done prior to the board's meeting. That's how the system works. I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to explain to people that's how county commissioners meet and boardings meet. We give the agenda requests, it is put before the board by whoever the director is at that department or office. And then those are taken action on, on this basis. That's how the system works. In regards to Mr. Pett's conversations, we did have workshops and I will address it in my deal. It is up to the officials in their department or the department heads to bring those in front of the board. We did do workshops on this and there was no formal request, is what he stated. That's all.
Hey, I want to, I want to thank everybody for, uh, staying cordial. That, that is key to getting through this whole thing. Thank you, guys. Sergeant Pettit?
Jim.
Kyle.
So I'm James O'Hagan, a lifelong farmer, lifelong farmer of New Orleans. This appears to be a violation of the public comment period regarding substantial changes to our government functions. Have you, the commissioner, delegated your authority to Paul Plackenjer? Is he an agent of the commissioner's office? Whenever the county commissioners or their agents provide funding to any office with string detached, they may be engaging in bribery, corrupt solicitation, or extortion, which are impeachable offenses. This action also impairs to involve violations of the separation of powers as risk management and/or the general administrator is reaching into the sheriff's office in which by doing so, he or they are violating the separation of powers, which is abuse of office and grounds for removal of office. A lot of us talked about the county risk pool. The county risk pool or risk management is a subversive activity that was designed by attorneys while violating the separation of powers for attorneys to enhance their judicial pride industry that sells injustices to the highest bidders and holds innocent taxpayers responsible for the wrongdoing of public employees. I will be asking that the risk pool management disclose the amount of money that is being paid to attorneys for contingency fees regarding their clients and have them explain in detail what was wrong with official bonding program that held public officers and their agents responsible for their own actions. Every time justice is denied, it creates enemies to the state and as such attacks our domestic tranquility. I wonder how many enemies you or the state can afford to create before they start coming for you. This action is affecting Sheriff Garcia's ability to call forth an inquest jury to investigate the election crimes complaints that we submitted to the Pacific County Sheriff's Office, the Pacific County Prosecutor's Office, and the Pacific County Commissioners. And they are in violation of a class C felony described in RCW twenty-nine A eighty-four seven twenty. And by doing so are directly involved in the subversive activities intended to overthrow the political power of the people. And by doing so, these investigations, these individuals are engaging in a criminal conspiracy as described in RCW nine A twenty-eight oh four oh F to cover up the criminal acts of Attorney General Robert Ferguson and his Rico accomplices. You are hard commissioners of the public as described in RCW twenty-nine A eighty-four seven twenty. And as such are subject to the criminal penalties described therein. Failure to act in these matters is an act of omission from which all of you become accessories after the fact as described in our federal criminal code entitled eighteen. I ask that you release Mr. Plackenjer from duty, from your duty as he seems to be more of a liability than it has been.
Good morning. My name is Jay Barley, um, from Ocean Park. Sounds like everything's already kind of been said. But I wanted to address your comments about the vote not being done. I think that Plackenjer kind of has an idea of where it's going or that other, um, proposal that he has later on number thirty could be coming up today. So that was my concern.
Could, could I just clarify, sir?
Yes.
What Jerry was saying is, is when we do these, if there's something up that will be passed, then if it's passed, then there's something else that has to come later that may or may not even get addressed. If, if we don't pass this, then that item, but it has to be on the agenda if we're going to address it and it has to be out to the public how many days?
Twenty-eight or forty-eight.
Forty-eight hours prior. So we couldn't even address it, um, until the next meeting if it wasn't on the agenda. It doesn't mean it's necessarily going to be acted on. It just means it's there, so.
It just, it just.
I hope that clarifies.
Thank you, it does. It just seemed kind of, uh, in line with the way this whole thing went. We don't know what's going on behind closed doors. And so honestly, you know, we're going to be a little hesitant to... What's been going on, have they already made up their minds? Are we just wasting our time? You know, it was kind of either handed, I don't know if you guys agree with that or not, but it was like, whoa, right in the middle of Christmas, nobody knows anything, everybody's gone and it's going to go. It's going to go through. We don't want it. I can't complain, it's simple, we don't want it until we know at least more about it.
Yes.
I will, I will say that I worked for and with the government my entire adult life. Ten years in the Air Force, thirty years with Boeing on the government contracts. I'll tell you, government, more government is never the answer. The more government you have, the more it's going to cost you, period. So a brand-new, a brand-new section of jail, whatever it is, you're going to have staff, hardened beings, that are going to make mistakes and things are going to happen. It doesn't matter if you create a new department, the same liability is going to be there. It doesn't matter if you create a new department, same liability is going to be there, maybe more. So, I just, I think we just kind of ran this through too quick. We should step back.
Diane. I'm Diane Bruber. My husband and I drove all the way from Oysterville. First time we've been to a commission meeting, we've only been living here four years, this month, four years this month. And just a couple of things. It's obvious, just you don't have to be a psychiatrist to realize that Mr. Plackinger, I'm sorry, Plackinger, has a great deal of animosity for Maryland. I've never met him before, but that, that was obvious. And I'm a little bit confused because he's proposing that we get rid of the outstanding commander, Mike Parker, to put in a friend of his. Okay, fine. If I understand this correctly, everybody else in the corrections department will be the same employees, except that they'll be under a different boss. Okay? You can answer that if you like. And since you mentioned Benton County, five years ago, five, five and a half, maybe six years ago, they switched over to corrections department, and it's, they're still trying to get used to it. It's such a mess. Okay? So I, you, you mentioned that, Mr. Plackinger, so I, I have the right to say that. And I don't see any guarantees.
Exactly.
That management is going to guarantee that there's no suicides or medical issues in the jail. I don't quite understand that. He hasn't explained that. And I notice, including the, is that a hundred and fifty people in this room or is that? I can't see. Okay, roughly two hundred people altogether. No, more, two hundred. What, two twenty? Two thirty? In this room, and nobody yet has supported this new proposal. Right? Is there anybody who, anybody who raised their hand and verbally say they, they support this proposal? No. We're the citizens here. This is a resounding, please don't vote for this, please, commissioners. This is resounding. Um, I guess that's it. I just want to guarantee that there'll be no more deaths if we switch this over. I just want to guarantee from you, since you...
Like, there's never going to be a guarantee.
Hi, I'm Jan Davis. I was, I might mention, I was just voted in as the chair of the Pacific County Republican Party a week ago. So, we have some of our executive committee here. Patty is your state committee woman. Anyway, I just wanted to piggyback on a couple of things that Diane said, and that is that I had, I did a mass social, social media post, and there were people that responded from the counties that Mr. Plackinger had mentioned that tried to do this. King, Benton, Clitzau, I can't pronounce that name, and their comments were bad. They do not, we the people do not like it. They did not like it. They said King County, well, we all know what happened in King County, but they, they resorted into more lawlessness. So they did not like it at all. I just made a few notes here. So, this is going to cost us more money. And also, if, if you didn't know, there was a, there, there has been a kind of a clash here between poor Sheriff Garcia, love Sheriff Garcia, support him fully. When he ran, I talked to him, my husband, and he was gracious enough to talk to us for a while and explain to us his, you know, his love for the Constitution. And one thing that he has said that I've heard him say a few times is this. He says, "You know what, Jan?" He says, "He is our liaison. If somebody from Ferguson's office," we all know what's happening there, "come to Pacific County and said, 'You said something you shouldn't have.'" They go to Sheriff Garcia, and they say, "Well, we're going to have to do something with one of your citizens. They said something we don't like." He says, "Well, gosh, where does that, where is that in the Constitution?" Sheriff Garcia said he will never, never arrest any of us for any of those unconstitutional, lawless crap coming out of Olympia. And anyway, let me just mention one thing, the paper. I don't know if any of you know it, but red pen, the original red pen. I was the original red pen. I did not stop writing for you. They shut me down. They wouldn't let me keep, I kept writing. The last article I sent in, they said, "No, you, you're done." So I just wanted you to know I had enjoyed it. I had hoped that I was getting more readers, and I was trying to put the word, the truth out there for you, but I was shut down.
And that is time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I have the, the letter here if you guys would like to hear it before we continue. Yep. Well, this isn't to stop you from your comments, but it was a request to hear the letter from the corrections staff. So, "To the citizens of Pacific County, the commissioners and chief administrative officer for Pacific County are planning on removing the Pacific County Jail and its corrections deputies from the sheriff's office and create a Department of Corrections. This letter is to inform you, the people, that we, the corrections deputies of the Pacific County Sheriff's Office strongly oppose this separation from the sheriff's office. If this vote passes, we will feel drastically demoralized. The past two years under Sheriff Daniel Garcia and Commander Michael Parker have shown us all who they are as our supervisors and our leaders. They have done many great things for the jail, its staff, the inmates, and our citizens. They have provided us with superior training, equipment, and fought for more deputy positions within the jail to greatly improve our quality of safety and security to the inmates and staff, as well as improve our quality of service to the people of Pacific County. We've had many issues with the locks and doors in the pods and cells for many years, and little to nothing had been done about it until the current sheriff's office administration took over in 2023." Some doors would not lock, and others would not open, potentially trapping inmates inside their cells. When we brought all of the broken locks, doors, and other major safety concerns to the attention of Commander Parker, Sheriff Garcia was able to start the process of securing a grant to partially offset the cost that the taxpayers would have to pay for replacing those facility items. The grant, the sheriff's, the grant that Sheriff Garcia was able to obtain was an upwards of $450,000, which was a sizable expense that didn't fall on the taxpayers of Pacific County. The jail is currently in the middle of the repair process. Being removed from the sheriff's office will cost the taxpayers more. The most we've ever seen a sheriff and his administration pay attention to the jail and its needs has been under Sheriff Daniel Garcia's command. During the previous administration, we were faced with an in custody death. After that had happened, jail staff came up with the idea of using medical alert bracelets that the inmates would wear and would monitor their vital signs in real time and alert us immediately if there were any changes to their vitals. This idea was presented to the county commissioners and risk manager and fell on deaf ears. We never heard of this lifesaving tool again. Another idea that Commander Parker has presented to the commissioners, chief administrative officer, and risk manager during a workshop meeting was a radar system in the jail in each of the inmate's pods or cell that would monitor their movement, pulse, and respiration in real time. The radar system would measure movement from up to thirty-three feet away and respirations from twenty-four feet away. And pulse from ten feet away. This monitor would be another risk mitigation and would greatly benefit the inmates. Corrections deputies and citizens, once again, this idea seemed to have fallen on deaf ears. Our inmates have also been neglected by the commissioners for their lack of obtaining adequate health care for our incarcerated population. It has been almost two years since the inmate had regular, consistent health care made available to them. Commander Mike Parker has diligently, has been diligently working on possible solutions to the enormous risk of not having a medical provider for the jail. One potential solution he is exploring is a virtual clinic for the inmates. The virtual physician would be able to evaluate the inmates, prescribe medications, as well as work with our local pharmacies, mental health providers, hospitals, clinics, dentists, and optometrists to provide the necessary care for our inmates. The day-to-day operations of the jail and as well as the patrol division will suffer greatly from this change if enacted. The corrections deputies will no longer be able to arrest defendants in court or those who are trying to turn themselves in. We will no longer be able to serve warrants, provide correction room security in our three courtrooms across the county, transport juveniles to and from the juvenile detention center of Grace Harbor and Cowlets Counties, and carry out other functions per RCW. Patrol deputies will have to be assigned these duties, which will in turn reduce the amount of deputies in the counties across the county to, in the communities across the county to even lower levels. If the jail is removed from the sheriff's office, this will in turn eliminate one fully certified law enforcement position, as well as one full-time clerk's position within the sheriff's office. We have a lack of confidence in the commissioners, chief administrative officers, and risk managers' ability to properly run the jail and mitigate risk and liability due to their past practices of ignoring corrective measures and needs of the jail. The jail is not a place to experiment with, especially when it is running smoothly, efficiently, and continuing to progress in the right direction. We believe Sheriff Garcia, Commander Parker, and the rest of the administration are taking the appropriate steps in this long journey to further better the Pacific County Jail, and we, the Pacific County Corrections Deputies, over the decades, the Pacific County Jail has purposely been kept in the hands of the sheriff due to an extreme important decision-making process to keep your community safe very respectfully, and then it lists all of the corrections deputies.
Hi, I'm Tom Lindahl of Seaview. And first, let me thank you, Commissioner Olson, for the clarification you did with regard to the spending and support for very Mr. Plackinger's report. So, for nearly twenty years, I was the budget preparer for Washington State Patrol. My, my budgets for the capital portion of it were three times yours or... So, I, I want to take issue with a couple of things you said during your presentation. Not really issue, but when you said you assisted Sheriff Garcia in getting some upgrades at the jail, and you said that in total it was $1.3 million, and you said that that was significant of the support that you and the commission give to the sheriff's office. Well, won't you agree that that particular example that you gave was a capital budget item? It was not?
No, those were all general fund dollars.
All right. I understand correctly. Thank you for that. That, one of the other things you said, you said it several times, however, was that you did support, reference the support of yourself and the commission for the sheriff's office, and yet, in your next breath, you said, "They're just very thin in a couple of cases." Would you agree that maybe in the case of the employee that had to be escorted off the property after Lewis County indictment was there because Sheriff Garcia had no alternative? I mean, I know law enforcement and how road patrols are set up, and if you've got a requirement for something on the road, you put everybody on the road. I, I was a non-commissioned officer, and I spent time up at the riots in Seattle doing law enforcement duties just because they were so strapped for people that they couldn't get the job done otherwise. So, I, I think that, that there, and I, I'm not being critical, there's realities for, for elected offices. You've got your primary source of revenue is tax, and you can only do what you can do, but your first obligation is public safety. And if you can't support, and I, and I do criticize you for not recognizing the fact that, that probably all, or most of all, of the, of the increase in the cost in the sheriff's department have been the addition of new manpower that's, that's not only just the road officers, but the support, because it takes about one person in support for every road officer that there is. And so, I, I think that it, that you need to find a way to keep your population safe.
And that's time.
All right. I'll, I'll get this cleared up, but I do have one other point to make. You made an allusion to the fact that two deaths had occurred, and I, I challenge you, did you do a formal statistical analysis of what that really meant? The fact that there were two deaths in a two-year period, does that mean that there was incompetence involved, or was it simply a random occurrence? Did you do that analysis?
I'll stand behind the statement.
Okay. So, but you did like a Bayesian analysis or something like that?
Yeah. I'll stand behind the statement that I read.
That is really telling me. What I'm going to say is I did that analysis, and I have a degree in aeronautical engineering. I guarantee you have math, math horsepower to do that. You cannot use two deaths in a two-year period as the test, the measure, the theory that that was caused by incompetence. If you take those fifty-five deaths that were reported by the Shenepot Bureau, you divide it up amongst the county, and then you adjust for population, it's random. It doesn't have anything at all to do with, it may be, it may be due to some lack of foresight or something. I, I, I can't, all I can say is that you can't tell from that, and you seem to indicate that those two deaths were prima facie evidence, that you had to take this, that you had to take this action. That's not true. It just, it just doesn't work that way.
My wife and I live in Ocean Park. I just, I just find it interesting that there's a proposal to add another layer of bureaucracy and spend another level of money for something that we already have. And rather than put those funds and, and give the sheriff the support that we voted for, you know, to carry out his duties, and, you know, if for some reason, if it doesn't work out, well, he's accountable to the voters, so are you guys. This is kind of reminiscent, the way this thing came about, of this continuing resolution that they tried to cram down our throats here a couple of weeks ago back in Washington. And, and that's just not right, you know, not to hurry that thing up. And I would just, I would make a recommendation that this resolution be withdrawn.
Just...
Yeah.
I'm Diane Berger. I'm struggling here with each side because I don't have enough statistics, like, was a deputy going through, walking through the jail cells, looking, making judgments, okay, every fifteen minutes, every half hour? Was it totally consistent to make sure everything was running great for all those people that are incarcerated? I mean, are they watched over? Are they looked at, "Here's your meal," and then no one sees anybody until another meal? Or are they just never checked? I don't know. I'd like that statistics to come out. That way I can make a good decision between either way.
You know, listening to everything here today, I'm going to interject something else again. I don't understand why an independent agency wasn't called in to do the investigations on, on these, on these deaths.
They were.
I, I came from, from a bigger city, and I know their situations, and my job was twenty-eight years. years in labor as a representative to the team shooting. So, I do have some ideas what goes on when this happens. And more times than not, there's independent agencies that are called in to investigate these. And if there had been, you know, hindsight's better than foresight, we might not all be standing here today.
I'll speak to that when I, when I address. The answer is yes, they were.
Okay.
My name is Jackson Wilken. I've lived here for twenty-one years, my whole life. I am currently a corrections deputy at the Pacific County Sheriff's Office. I'm going to try and hit on a couple of different things and not just repeat everything everybody else said. About the budget, we've used more of a budget, sure, but like another gentleman said, with inflation, everything at price has gone up. Our overtime budget alone in the first three months of the year, we're crazy understaffed. I wouldn't necessarily say overworked, but we don't have the people with vacations, sick time, people getting hurt. We had a guy break his nose and his wrist. He was out for two months, he was on light duty. Before Sheriff Garcia came in, I wasn't working here at the time, but I've heard from plenty of my coworkers, the jail was single-staffed from, I think, what was it, eight o'clock at night until eight in the morning or six? So, removing him, to me, is just wild. I mean, I just, the guy's been doing nothing wrong. We've been giving it our all. Garcia's been doing nothing but trying to help us and fund us and get us to a point where we don't have to worry about this kind of stuff. And I'm not going to say you guys made up your mind at all, I'm trusting your guys' process, but I don't know how much of your mind has been made up listening to Paul and reading your statements. I just advise you, please listen to the people that are here and are speaking to you. I don't think I've heard a single person say that they want this, whether it be on Facebook, on Instagram, in person. I think a lot of people here are very vocal about the support of the jail being under the sheriff's office.
My name is Rita Hall, and I ran for county commissioner on the Republican ticket, and supporting the sheriff's department was a large part of why I wanted to run. I came here to the peninsula in eighteen. My brother's a pastor, has been on the peninsula for well over twenty years, and so I know the area quite well. Took a lot to pull me from where I was really involved at the grassroots level with county government and going all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court with different issues going on in northwest Montana. So, for me to come here, I loved everything here except the government. And instead of grumbling and all of that, I was asked if I would get involved by a group of constitutional patriotic people that came to me, knocked on my door, and asked me if I would run for county commissioner. I was defeated by seven hundred votes. I'm a nobody, you don't know me, but I stand for the Constitution and patriotism and God and country, that's who I am, and my sheriff. The previous sheriffs I have met, the one that was a highway patrol man that was shot in the back by a bad guy when he turned his back on a bad guy, he was shot in the back. People voted for him out of sympathy. I have a problem with that. I would, I no longer yet, you know, I wasn't, hadn't yet registered here at that point in time in 2018, but I went out campaigning for anybody that was running against that sheriff that had turned his back on a bad guy. I campaigned for anybody else. The next one, he came along, he basically focused in on his own area. Nepotism was a problem there, that was souvenir. He wanted to be popular, he had personality issues. He was weak. He was weak, didn't show on the peninsula as often as he wanted to, as I wanted him to. Next came Garcia, and he was a write-in. He was a write-in. And he, and, and I saw good reasons. I met his mom, I met him. I was, he came to our national day of prayer. I was blown away by what he, this man had to say. I didn't win the election, obviously, but I'm going to try to bring out my points, bullet point, okay? If we go to a corrections department, are we going to have more lawlessness? But we've checked them, they must tell you can't, look what happened with those kids. A lot of those kids are now on death row. I was a suicidal teenager, I have to tell you. Suicide happens when a person is at their all-time low. When a person is incarcerated, that's their all-time low. If a person is dead-set on suicide, you're not going to stop them. You're not, they're going to find a way, and they're going to do it if they're dead-set on suicide. It's not our fault, as the county, it's not our fault, they commit suicide in the jail. They've been incarcerated. Sometimes you just can't do it. We have a great man on the sheriff's force by the name of Michael Parker. He, like it was said, he stopped a suicide at one point during his duties. For you to have chosen somebody already to the point of writing a severance package for Mr. Parker is not fair, is not fair to the sheriff. He is a binding, what I have to say, that's not fair to the board of commissioners. We, the people, wanted this man. These board of commissioners are supposed to represent us, the constituents, and I don't hear that happening necessarily. I'm going to blame the people here on something, because you are not paying attention to what's happening behind closed doors. You need to be doing this. You need to be aware of what's happening here. I'm needing to move on here quickly. Okay, thank you for helping our sheriff write that $450,000 grant. My family and I, we've written grants before. I wouldn't want to take on that responsibility. I've done it, I've got training in it, but we need to have somebody, even on the county level, who can write grants. It's really important. If I had to go back to school...
And that is time.
I have three more points, okay? You held back information, you held back information from us, you brought it out at Christmas Day. If you had been working on this and you had that package already, all of these details in your head, to bring it out at a workshop meeting on the eighteenth, right before Christmas time, was not fair, not fair to us, not fair to our sheriff, not fair. You held back information. The jail has been antiquated for a long time, and Garcia saw the issues there, and he brought them, and he's been correcting it one at a time. It takes time. It takes time. The timing on this is all wrong. I wanted to study through the RCWs. I'm new here. The RCWs, I got, oh my gosh, I'm trying to figure them out. I want to pick the laws.
Sorry, we still have a lot of people to get to. Are you pretty much done?
Oh, I've got a lot to say, but I'll be quiet.
Sorry, thank you. Yes, we have gotten to everybody in the room.
Good morning. I want to thank everyone for coming and allowing us to speak in front of the commission and Mr. Plankton as well. I'm standing here to ask you to vote no on this, on the proposal, the resolution that Paul Plankton has brought to you and now to all of us, to privatize the Pacific County Jail. I know Mr. Plankton said it isn't about prioritizing, okay, or privatizing, excuse me. Jails and prisons and detention centers are one of two things. They're either private or they're public. They're public right now because it is under the purview of the sheriff's department. If we put it under a DOC, it is now privatized, and I'm going to read the definition, but it's still privatized. Well, okay? It's not your time. I can speak, all right? Okay, so, transfer from private, private, from public to private ownership and control is what private decision is. The legislature in Washington State, the RCW 7395-101 on private detention facilities, subsections two through seven, it states that profit motives of the private owners lead to private prisons and detention facilities. It causes them to cut operational costs, including the provisions of food, healthcare, rehabilitation services, and because of their primary fiduciary duty, it is to maximize the profits of the shareholders. This is in stark contrast to the interest of the state to ensure health, safety, and welfare of Washingtonians, including inmates and detainees in the Washington State borders. Three, the legislature also found people confined in for-profit prisons and detention facilities have experienced abuses and have been confined in dangerous and unsanitary conditions. Safety risks and abuses in private prisons and detention centers at local, state, and federal levels have been consistently and repeatedly documented. The United States Department of Justice Office Inspector General found in 2016 that privately-owned prisons or detention centers incurred more safety and security incidences per capita than comparable BOP institutions, which is the Federal Bureau of Prisons. The Office of the Inspector General additionally found that privately-owned prisons had higher rates of staff uses of force against inmates, and that people detained in private prisons submitted more safety and security-related grievances, including those regarding quality of food. Four, the legislature finds, and this is Washington State, that private prisons have cut costs by reducing essential security and healthcare staffing. The Sentencing Project, a national research and advocacy organization, found in 2012 that private prisons staff earns $5,000 on average, less than publicly-run facilities, and receive almost sixty hours less of training than those who are running with the public versus private institutions, okay? So, many prisons have gone without healthcare.
And is that, are you about...
Many months, yes, let me just go. Number five is, the legislature finds that private prisons and detention centers are less accountable for what happens inside those facilities than are state-run facilities, as they are not subject to the Freedom of Information Act under 5C USC 552, or the Washington State Records, Public Records Act, Chapter 4256. So, there's a couple more which I won't go over, but there is a difference between privatized and publicly-run jails and detention centers, and because there are over twenty-two states that do not do what you're trying to do, because the profits are not what you think they will be, and also, the taxpayers have to pay more towards these expenses. So, I would just like to refer, if anyone wants to look at it, it is RCW, RCW 70395010. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that there's no way that this proposition is privatizing this facility. Okay, ma'am, you haven't spoken yet.
My name is Heather Malone. I'm from Long Beach, Washington, and I have never been involved in government, trusted being elected to mostly come and write things. I do feel a little bit blindsided on this thing around Christmas. I kind of wish you maybe had conducted places like in Long Beach and other places, meetings that we could have attended to see what was on before you. It must be a very difficult decision. I'm, I have to say that Sheriff Garcia has been an amazing ambassador. He shows up at everything. I belong to the Saddle Club, and so many of us have volunteered a lot over on our side. And he shows up at everything. He's always there, he meets people, he talks to people, and that's really important. And you guys are representatives, and I don't know you, but I hope I will be seeing you at some of our local venues so we can get to know you too. You are one of us, but we're having disagreements with how you are doing this. And I'm hoping that we can work it out and not, I mean, we're all adults, there's some madness in the room, there's anger, angst, but we're all people, and we really want the safety of the community. I've noticed a lot more sheriffs and police cars and things going through Long Beach than years ago, and I think that's important, that we feel safe too, that we're responded to. You know, if you don't keep your businesses and your citizens safe, you don't really have a community. So, I just want to say, he's a great ambassador, if nothing else. I believe in him because he's been honest, and he shows up, and I thank him for that. And I'm hoping you guys will too, because you're part of us. We're all together. It's not us against you or something.
Okay, my name is Pam Miller. Used to be Johnson, third, third generation from Norway, living, and I'm a retired corrections officer from the Pacific County Jail. I worked there twenty years. I'm the only female that did the twenty years ever that retired from the jail. I worked at the women's prison. I worked suicide watch. I sat there. I only have three females to watch in suicide watch. I'm sitting on a podium. I have to write down every fifteen minutes what each person's doing. Guess what? There was a girl that climbed up on the sink and tried to hang herself just within a little bit of time, and she was four feet from me. You can't see everything all the time. When I worked at the jail, yes, there was somebody that died on my watch. Was it my fault? No, it was not. He had a heart attack. I was handing out meds. He says, "When's lunch?" I said, "In about ten minutes, as soon as I get through with the rest of the med line, we're going to serve lunch." Probably ten minutes. So, I get to his cell, push the buzzer, he doesn't respond. I push the buzzer again, he doesn't respond. So, I get on the radio and I call my sergeant. He is not responding, so he comes running down there. We go in there, he lifts his arm, he's dead. He died of a heart attack. Was that my fault? No. You cannot blame people because somebody commits suicide or they die. I had a guy that was in his bunk by himself, he put a sheet around his neck, weaved it through the bars that are on the windows, and tried to hang himself. Me and the other female officer had to cut it off. He was a big guy, he was over two hundred pounds. I'm shaken because I just came from my house. I've been listening to this for like whenever this started, and I'm pissed, and I'm broken-hearted because of what you're doing to the jail. This is my family. Lisa, I'm mad at you. I've known you for years. What the hell? You're a commissioner, and you went out and got a DUI and wrecked your car? You shouldn't even be here. I'm ashamed of you. How can you get away with this? People don't like that. This is my county. My family's from here. I have lived here all my life. My kids have lived here. I'm sick of this. I am sick of everything. And you read in, I was reading you all the time, and I agreed with you all the time, and when you weren't there anymore, I was pissed, because yes, I'm a Republican, and yes, I love Trump. And I'm... I'm sorry, you guys, too. My heart breaks. That jail has had problems with it when I worked there, and I started in ninety-seven, at forty-seven years old, mind you. See this? I got this from the academy, and I still have it, and it's probably twenty-five years old, but I still wear it because I'm proud of it. I'm proud of the county, I'm proud of our sheriff. I've worked for four sheriffs. I think he's the best we've ever had. I love, Scott Johnson had my back. He was good.
And he wasn't voted in because they felt sorry for him?
No, I voted for him. I got in trouble. I was taken out in front of the board because I had my radio on and I had two trustees taking the garbage out, because our supervisor, Silk Meyer, did not put a camera in the elevator, did not put an alarm system, and I'm going to tell the county right now. The other officer got fired because she wasn't doing her job. I was stuck in that elevator for forty-five minutes with two trustees. I had no weapon because we weren't allowed a taser, you can't carry a gun in the jail. I'm scared. I'm with two inmates, right? You don't know if you can trust them or not.
But it's not the sheriff's fault.
And they wanted to fire me because I did wrong? It's not my fault. That, no, it wasn't the sheriff's fault at all, but Scott Johnson, when he came on, he says, he called me down at my, at his office at almost midnight, just before my shift got over. And he says, "I read through your personal file, and you're not to any blame, and you're not going to have to work because we're not watching you." He said, "You're not..." He said, "You're doing a fantastic job."
And again, that is time. Thank you, ma'am.
This is really hard for me to talk about, but I have lost three family members from suicide indigestion. I had no idea, no idea. You don't always know when someone's going to commit suicide, and they're going to do it, no matter what. They knew, and we loved them, but they were determined to go. Thank you, Linda. I am pro Garcia. I didn't say that, but I did want to say, he should not, no one should be blamed for the suicide, because, and I don't blame myself anymore. Thank you, Linda.
Is there anyone else in the room?
Yeah, I'm Julie Rickers. When are we voting on this? And if you vote yes for it, I will, we will work with other people and have you all re-recalled. Because we do not want this privatized. It takes away from the people that I love all dearly. I know several of the deputies, they love me to death, and I just don't want it to happen. You need to have this stay privatized, or I mean, as a public, so that the people know that they can, you know, trust Garcia and his judgment, and you need to be working with him, instead of taking money from him. Look what you can say, hey, what do you need? That's what you're not doing. You're going out there and saying, "Oh, we don't have funds for this, that, and that." A bunch of baloney to me. You need to help fix the jail, get the deputies the things that they need, and stop saying we want it privatized, because it's not going to work, and it's something that's going to make this county hate you even more.
Let's say again, it is not privatization. Is there anything else in the room?
Yeah, more record.
Good morning. I'm Andrew Martin. I'm a civil clerk at the Pacific County Sheriff's Office, and I've got two short things to say. First one is, I'm a resident in this county, and I have 40 years of work experience. Every successful organization, considering making a significant structural change, such as what is being contemplated in today's proposal, does a cost and benefit analysis. And what I've heard a lot of people ask for is, what were the results of that cost and benefit analysis, if one was done? On the other side, I'm going to talk to you about what I know to be true. I cannot respond to things that have to do with corrections. I don't work that. I work at six. So, I was hired to be a civil clerk at the Pacific County Sheriff's Office on 6/1 and 22. When I got here, I noticed there were quite a few problems that needed to be addressed. Concealed pistol licenses took as long as three to five months to be completed. Now, the turnaround time is two business days, with rare exception. Requests for paper services would often sit for a month or more. Now, they are handled the day they are received. When people came to the window at the south end office, all they saw was a six-foot-tall wall. That wall has been removed, so that people can now see us, and we can see them. Records were stored indefinitely. I found records dating back to 1964. Now, we are following proper procedures for records retention, and everything is current. People were often treated as an annoying interruption. Now, everyone is treated like a customer. Employees are avoided coming into the office. I didn't meet most of them until well into 2023. Now, let the patrol and corrections deputies know they are of value and respect the members of the team. They do not hesitate to discuss their concerns with this administration. I keep hearing people say the Sheriff Garcia isn't qualified to be a sheriff, because he lacks years of law enforcement experience. Every sheriff prior to Sheriff Garcia has brought years of law enforcement experience to the table. When you hire someone with years of experience somewhere, you get a person who immediately tries to remake where they are to wherever they came from. It's human nature to do that, because you're out of your comfort zone. What the Pacific County Sheriff's Office really needed was a person with more important skills, the ability to effectively manage a diverse group of individuals, the ability to prioritize service to the public, the humility to listen and evaluate what is heard, and most importantly, the ability to get people to work together as a team. Sheriff Garcia treats everyone with dignity and respect, something that was sorely lacking prior to his arrival. When he arrived, he asked everyone, not just all the employees, but all the citizens of Pacific County, "What can we do to improve?" I've had 36 bosses over the last four years. What I've learned is that the best bosses are the ones who don't see things from the top-down perspective. I tell you what to do and how to do it, but from bottom up. Let's work together and make positive changes. The most effective managers are the ones who ask, "What can we do to improve?" Sheriff Garcia has made many improvements over the last two years, and he is still asking, "What can we do to improve?" If there's anything that can't be done, he'll do it.
I've got 11 people online.
I've got something to say, too. I'm Rafael McIntosh, obviously, I'm a deputy and a special agent. Other than that, I'm a taxpayer, just like everybody in this room, right? So, Paul, question. You want to talk about risk the whole time, very much. So, what would happen if I was a deputy and I was given expired carrier and body armor? What would happen if I were to go out on a call and get shot? Would that be a liability on the county? Would that be a lawsuit for the county from my family? So, I got to the sheriff's office, I was given expired body armor. This man right here made it possible for us to all have new armor. So, that cost that occurred, that you're talking about, is because there are right and wrongs that have been done forever. Also, commissioners, I got a brand-new car. I don't have a brand-new radio. I'm told it's sitting at you guys for funding. Is that true? Can any of you guys speak to that?
We got funded radios. If you don't have one, I don't know.
Well, I'm told it's sitting at you guys, so whether you guys want to be upfront about it or not, whatever the case is, I don't have a radio. So, when I go out to Lul' Bamm, my portable doesn't work when I'm out in my car. But with my new radio, it would work, because it Bluetooths to my car, and it gives me more reception. So, if I don't have radio out there, right? If I go to Berg, and I get shot and killed, and my radio doesn't work, because I don't have the right tools, that's a lawsuit too, right? Correct? Paul?
I don't think it's been brought forward to us, but I would hope that there's...
Like I said, we're not getting into this, that part of it. I'm just saying, there's a whole bunch of stuff that causes risk, right? And all Sheriff Garcia and the admin team has done is correct the problems of the past. That's all I'm saying, okay?
Thank you.
I'm the chief criminal deputy for the sheriff's office. The sheriff has allowed me to make executive-level decisions for patrol. He's entrusted me with that, and if I ever disagree with him, I can go to him and tell him I disagree with this decision. And if I disagreed with this, I would go to him, and he won't lose my job, as much as I know that he wouldn't fire me for disagreeing with him. I'm willing to do that, and I'm not going to disagree with this decision. I am going to disagree with this decision that is potentially up to vote, or that is up to vote. I think, Paul, it's a basic professional courtesy that you could have reached out to me if this affects patrol, and even more basic professional courtesy that you could have reached out to Commander Parker and the sheriff. That is extremely admirable to do that. I'm against this, I want to make it clear that I'm against this, to make this happen today. I would sit down at 5:00 AM tomorrow morning and discuss this in a heartbeat, to talk about how mortality rates in the jail have gone up 11% in Washington State as of 2019. How is that his fault? That's society's fault. It's not the sheriff's fault that mortality rates have gone up. So, the fact, I have one other thing to say, and that's the statement about how we're well-staffed patrolers. I've sat in front of you commissioners and explained that we're not, we have the same commissioned officers as we did, or fewer, than we did in 1980, in the 80s. We're right there.
Risk is in there?
That's why we put up 1.3 million into the door project, is because we went toward it, we didn't, but we did.
You didn't.
Okay.
My name is Dylan Turner. I'm an eight-year corrections deputy in the Pacific County Sheriff's Office. Speaking on behalf of the jail, we have had five prior suicide attempts that we've been successfully preventing, so that's our risk mitigation. And you haven't researched that, you've only researched the deaths in the jail that weren't preventable.
Because we didn't know.
Should have done your homework, because you asked.
Our ask is of all of our department heads to bring those forward to the risk. You may or may not like me for any other reasons, but you don't know me, and what we do behind this desk. So, Mr. Naknak, I ask of you this, and the sheriff, and all of the jails. If there is a problem, it needs to be brought forward to us. I'm a commissioner. I sit behind this desk to base on the formalities of the fiscal matters in this jail, or this county, and all the risks that are associated with it. It's not my duty to go up to the jail daily to find out what problems arise up there.
I'll take my three minutes and then...
So, I'm just asking you that. If we're going to be upfront and bring it forward to the commissioners, or the risk management, or auto knowledge, that would be a process. I'm not here to be confrontational, but if we don't know, we cannot act on it.
Okay. And what you're proposing that you do is act on something that you do not know about. So, the burden to inquire and collect information is on the party that's proposing the change. So, if you come and underhandedly propose this change, which I think the general consensus has been, it appears to be underhanded, whether it was or wasn't, it is on you to research the information. It is not on us to be providing reports to you. Okay. So, then you understand that a separate elected official is not subordinate to you, they're lateral to you.
I also understand that.
Okay. So, therefore, it is not their burden to report to you. If you want to make a change, and you're going to make some sweeping changes you proposed, the duty is on you to collect the information, the facts, and do the research. In this case, this unelected bureaucrat, Paul, who's proposing this...
See, this is more division.
Nope, it's not.
This is division.
He has three minutes.
The stating...
The point is this, a lot of things have been, I'm not interrupting you, I want to engage in a bit of conversation.
I'm more than willing.
This is unusual in meetings. We don't engage with public on conversations. But I'm not attacking you. I'm just asking you, you are absolutely correct with the sheriff's pardon this. He does not have to come forth daily with information. But if there's a risk matter, if there's a risk assessment or issue within a jail, it would be pertinent that somehow our risk department would be able to have that information so that it can be addressed. I'm not asking for a daily report for them. We are just asking. Also, there was much astute about defunding and non-funding. These are all just rhetoric things that are not necessary to the purpose of what we're trying to achieve here. I don't think anybody here is trying to strip any powers from anybody. These fact-checkers, I have done my fact-checking, if you want to know me, I am a fact-checker. This right here represents every vendor claim that has come in front of this commission from January 1st till December 20th. I have gone through, you're exactly right. That's what I was hired to do, and I go through these every time. So, if you want, if you want to ask something of me, ask anything. I will pull it out of here, explain any expenditure, so...
I'm a constituent in your district, and I'd appreciate if I could speak.
You can speak.
Okay. So, as I was saying, I want to be clear, that what is happening is someone who is unelected, to whom has owes no obligation to the people of this county, and has expressed to me that his obligation is not to the people of this county, his obligation is to the county government. This same man is making, shake your head, Paul, you said it, it's on body cam. So, what I'm saying is, that position has been expressed to me by Paul, this man right here. He is the same person that is now proposing, he takes oversight of the jail and places it, as he said, not under him, but under a director, to whom he, who reports to him, to whom he supervises. So, we can get cute with words and say, okay, you're not directly accountable to the jail. However, the person who is directly accountable and responsible for everything the jail does and fails to do, reports to you, Paul. That is, in fact, I've seen you, Commissioner, shake your head when people say it's inserting another layer of bureaucracy. I don't understand, it seems to me that you have taken Paul's position in this, although you're stating that the...
That is incorrect. That's an incorrect statement.
Okay. Well, then, I stand corrected, you have not taken Paul's position in this. I don't know why you were shaking your head when people said those things.
I give Paul his message to speak his mind. I also get my benefit.
I would appreciate it if I had that benefit, Jerry. As I was saying, I've seen you shake your heads, as citizens have expressed their concern about inserting a layer of bureaucracy between their voice and law enforcement operations in this county via the jail. That is exactly what is happening. You mince words however you want. You're put in the jail underneath an appointed director, whom Paul has selected. I'm not going to speculate as to whether or not there is personal relationship there, I do not know, I want to be clear on that. But you're proposing to take half of the law enforcement operations of this county and place it underneath a man that he has selected that will report to him. Then, as we chase the chain of responsibility down, eventually, we'll fall onto you commissioners. That is, in fact, inserting a layer of bureaucracy between how it currently sits, which is the jail. Oversight of the jail falls on the sheriff. If the sheriff does a bad job, he can be recalled, he can be voted out next election. Paul can't be recalled, he can't be voted out. I have nothing further. You have my time.
Mike Parker, County Sheriff's Office. First of all, Paul, it's very clear, you've put a lot of time and effort into your research. You've come up with some things that clearly you feel very important. Do you want to recognize that a lot of time and effort has been put into that? The issue was brought up about the jail videos. I feel like it's important to express that. We told our risk management, when the videos were first requested, that eight days' worth of 64 cameras was going to be about 530, 64 terabytes, and it was going to be months to get that. So, the implication that we're holding off and we're not releasing that video, a little misleading. Next thing, you said several times that previous sheriffs haven't spent the entire budget for the jail, and we've spent considerably more. I'll submit a couple of things on that. Number one, if we haven't exceeded the budget, was the problem. We were given $10 to spend, we can spend $10, right?
Absolutely.
Something like that. But yeah, when we came into the jail, there was a lot of equipment issues. I mean, every corrections deputy in this room can speak up now if I'm lying, but there were a lot of equipment issues, there were a lot of uniform issues, a lot of things needed to be replaced up there, and like a lot of people in this room have already said, it costs money. And to mitigate a lot of the risk from having expired tasers and things like that in there, yeah, we've spent a lot of money. But again, we haven't exceeded our budget, so I'll submit from the crowd that we shouldn't be having that blame against us. To mention something that Deputy McIntosh brought up, the radio money. I don't know if that is with the commissioners, but I do know that our undersheriff brought that issue, and with the request for the money for the new radios for the cars, to Mr. Plankinger back in February?
Yeah, I submitted it to Clerk of the Board twice.
Okay, and how many times we followed up on that with non-response?
A lot.
A lot. So, yes, our new cars don't have new radios, we've been requesting it for 10 months, don't know where that one's at. So, not going to get into the details on this latest incident in the jail, the latest death, and that it is absolutely tragic, but just learning a few minutes ago that something real similar happened several years ago. I'm concerned that no risk mitigation was taken by the county to correct a known issue. Last thing I'm going to say is, there's a mutual friend in our, or a mutual employee in the county government that has offered on several occasions to host conversations between the sheriff and Paul, me and Paul, the sheriff and Murray, and me and Murray. Our answer has always been, absolutely make it happen. We've been told, no, absolutely, it's not going to happen by the individuals on the other side of the table. We would welcome a conversation, and I'll welcome that anytime. Please, engage us in conversation, please. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room?
Sergeant Flynn, been in the jail for 16 and a half years. I could go on way more than three minutes. I could go on way more than three minutes, but I'm not. There's a lot of people in this room I respect, even, even to this point, a lot of work goes in. Concern that I have, Jerry, Mr. Doyle, you said, something's brought to our attention, we'll take care of it. Beginning of last year, construction was in the jail to seal the shower stalls. They were grinding concrete for months. We've been breathing in concrete dust for months. We brought it up through union grievance, and it was supposed to be, we'll clean the vents, we'll clean it up. That can got kicked down the road, kicked down the road. And then it was, well, we're starting a second construction project, which involves cutting concrete. On the 7th of December, we had a training, Saturday. After the training, I went back upstairs to take equipment back, and walked into the jail, the concrete dust was so thick, I was choking. Everyone was in the control room, they wouldn't go out in the hallways because of this layer of fog in the hallways. And, we're two years later, still breathing in concrete dust. I can take my hand, look at this, looks like I have a gray glove on. Where's the mitigating risk in now? Among us? Do you care about us? Why is it two years, we still don't have a clean office, clean jail? Why is it?
I just need one minute. On the subject of the concrete dust that causes lung disease, I put in a claim for a Pacific County resident who got mesothelioma from asbestos. And I went to New York to beat President to trial, he got a $41 million award. How does that sit when concrete dust can cause a very similar disease in our sheriff's employees? It would absolutely wipe out...
Not to mention the continues.
Take it serious.
If there's no one else in the room, we're going to move to Zoom. Mr. David Alsop, Alsop?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll keep it brief. My name is David Alsop, and I thank you for allowing me to participate in this democratic process. I'm going to read a note that I sent to the commissioners only 23rd after returning home from town hall meeting with Sheriff Garcia and his staff. I served with citizens of Pacific County as a professional firefighter, paramedic for over 20 years. In the end, that service severely impacted the health of your philosophy in my life. To say that I care deeply about the governance of this county and the people is an understatement, as I invest in myself deeply in the service of our community. I want it to be known that I vote in every election. In a jurisdiction where every vote counts, and where a single vote can make a very real difference, this should make you all sit up and take notice. I just returned from a town hall meeting with Sheriff Garcia and his staff. The objectiveness, professionalism, and integrity that he displayed during this meeting is in lockstep with his character and leadership as I know that. Having worked with him directly in the field for many years, he and his staff have servants' hearts to the fullest. I know because I have seen such honorable displays of character over and again by each of them with many occasions. They all serve this county and its people with honor and integrity, and they should be treated as such. It was interesting to me that none of you were in attendance at this meeting. It seems to me that if your intentions were honorable on the matter in separating the jail from the sheriff's office, that at least one representative from the board would have been there to speak directly to your constituents. After all, this is a monumental decision that will impact each and every member of our community, and not one of you were there to represent the county's elected board. It gives the appearance that you do not want to answer to your voters on this matter. In short, it does not pass the smell test. Something is fishy here, and it stinks. It appears that you are planning to make a major decision for the people without their representation based on shaky data at best. This will directly and negatively affect our safety and our pocketbooks. Not to mention that by ramming such a decision through with little notice and without educating the public on what effect it will have on us, you undermine our democracy and erode our trust in your integrity. Please know that it has not gone unnoticed by many of the people that I have spoken with to that this proposal is potentially a conflict of interest at this time, as it could possibly benefit a commissioner given her current legal troubles, which she should likely abstain from voting on this matter. Please, I ask you to take the will of the people into consideration on this matter and give the members of the community the time and information we need to vote. It appears that there is clearly an adversarial relationship between the administrative officer and the sheriff's office. It seems that somebody's ego needs to be checked. This does not serve the will of the people. Again, I ask that you pause any decision until the will of the people can be heard and understood fully by the board.
And that is fine. Amen. Thank you, Bonnie Cosby. Do we need to add any...
No, she can...
Oh, she's... Bonnie Cosby?
Hello?
Hello.
Okay, thank you. First off, I just want to say clearly, I stand with the sheriff on this. You know, commissioners, you have a difficult job. However, the way that this has been laid out, the timing of it, and everything about it, I agree with David. It stinks. Now, I listened, Mr. Plackinger, I listened to your statement, and my question for you, because it really kind of made me dizzy. It did feel like a spin, especially when you talked about the differences of the previous sheriff's money spending, Sheriff Garcia's money spending, you didn't indicate, number one, that more people were hired, number two, that improvements were starting to be done within the jail, number three, that there is a, an inflation factor here. It, you seem to be speaking only the things that serve your agenda. And I would like to ask, along with this proposed resolution, where are the feasibility of tests, the reports? Where are the interviews with the people that know the most about this? Where is the research? Where are your notes? And if in fact they do exist, have they been given to the commissioners previous to the vote so that they can be best equipped to make a decision? A decision that I feel should not happen at all. There are three things I think should happen. One, it should be withdrawn. Two, it should be voted no. Three, it should be tabled until the county, the commissioners, and you, and the risk management can present to the public your compelling reasons with facts behind it as to why this is a better road to follow. Sheriff Garcia has been such a boon to all of us living in the county, and I appreciate his work, I appreciate the environment he has created within the deputies and all of the departments and within the jail. And I'm very proud of the sheriff's department in only two years' time, I'm very proud of them. Attempt to discredit and to take away what they need to continue on a path to success. Thanks. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not done. I'm telling you that the county spent a few hundred dollars to update the audio for Zooming. Sometimes you can't hear you, then you're in your well, then you go away, you need a better audio set. Now I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Henry Idica.
Hello, my name is Henry Idica, and thank you for taking the opportunity to hear me out. First of all, I, I'm, as a tenure, ten plus year for the Pacific County, I am, I'm quite overwhelmed to see the response from the community in this issue. And I think anybody who is currently involved, as a citizen, as a county employee, or is unelected represented, should take note. This is an amazing opportunity to not only come together as a community, but come together as leaders. And, and as leaders, you have to recognize, leadership comes with burdens. And one of the burdens that comes with leadership is cooperation, communication, and compromise. I currently have a job working as an administrator for a large state organization. I won't mention it because I don't want anybody to feel as if I'm using that title as a, as a platform for my, what I'm going to say next. When I first heard of this, I was shocked, because I've seen other communities, how this has affected them. Clark County is a good example of the division that was created, and also the increased administrative costs that occur when you separate sheriff duty from the DOC, or the DOCs and the sheriff. Some of what Mr. Plackinger said is honestly, is sound. Risk mitigation is, is not something to avoid. My concern is this, some of what, what you put in your statement, Mr. Plackinger, and yes, I'm addressing you, sounds more like a disciplinary, a discipline...
Yes.
...opportunities. And if there are discipline opportunities, that shouldn't be part of this decision, that should be part of building your relationship with the elected sheriff. I haven't had much time to compose my thoughts and my notes, so as I read through, I apologize for my, my book by culture, culture. The new position that you're proposing, all that real cost, the benefit package, et cetera, those should be reinvested into recruitment, retention, and repairs of existing personnel and programs and facilities. It's always cheaper to, let's say, remodel than build new.
And that is fine.
And just one more thing, thank you for this opportunity, and I hope we get another opportunity to separate the hyperbole from the fact. And again, really appreciate your time, appreciate the community getting together, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Julie Cox, you're kind of behind the line, do you have your head up?
It looks like there's a hand in there.
Are you there, Julie?
Yes.
Did you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. First off, I just, I'm looking at all the people in the room and all the people online. Y'all folks need to take a look at how many people are here, and how many are concerned about what's going on. I'm a resident, I've been in the county for five years, I live here full-time, and I love the community. I don't know a lot about the history, but this was the place that great, my husband and I planned to stay here until they send us out feet first. But my concerns, and I have a few, is the timeliness of this, this proposal. It seems that you have worked on it a very long time, and it's very unprofessional to bring this in at the last minute, you'll be at Christmas. I feel that it's, it's just, let's sneak it under the rug, and we'll vote on it, and too bad, so sad. I would just like to see better public information from the commissioners. I feel that a lot of people don't even know what's going on, and the times of your meetings are very unattainable for people who work, who have other things. And I've listened to other people that you need to be more out in the community, commissioners, all three of you, and I hope that you could put your head up to look at what's going on. I just feel that, you know, you guys work for us, we pay the taxes. The other thing I feel that the proposal, it's, it's just, there are two, there are actually three sides to every story, and I think the citizens deserve to hear all three. And I, I am behind the sheriff, I truly believe the sheriff needs to oversee the jail. I don't believe we need to bring in people from outside. I think he's working very hard on establishing a ground and working up. When new people come in, it always is a time of transition. The other thing is, I think you need to work together, you need to put your feelings aside, come to the table with open communication, and solve the problem. The past is the past, the future is the future, and if you folks could put your heads together and work as a team, things will go well. This community has grown in the years that I've been here, and it will grow a lot more. And you folks sitting on that dais need to pay attention to everyone that is here, and everyone at time. My name's Julie Cox, and I live in Ocean Park. Thank you.
Excuse me, Dave Kandup.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. I'm Dave Kandup, I'm a physician from Milwaukee. I wanted to say, I sent a long email at 6:20 this morning to the commissioners, to the commissioners, to write. I do have some thoughts about what's right. I'm not here to support one side or the other, I want good public services. I learned a lot in public health from Dr. Paul Wiesner, who was health officer at the Cav County, Georgia. I've never forgotten when he told me, remember, public health never belongs to the public health professionals, public health always belongs to the people. The same applies to all public services, it belongs to the people. And the voice of the people that they could not be much clearer with. My conservative friends are united and galvanized here. My moderate and my progressive friends, most of them are not yet involved, but the ones who are involved are also saying, slow it down. You have a remarkably unified public on both sides of the political spectrum, and I advise you to listen. I love the detail of Mr. Plackinger's comments, they were far more than I could master at this time. This decision is way more complicated than buying a new car, and I heard at the end of Mr. Plackinger's talk, if you don't vote this up, we may have to close the jail. I have no idea if this is a voice of reason or if this is a record package. I do not know, I give Mr. Plackinger the benefit of the doubt, but I can tell you, when a car dealer says, take the deal now, or I won't be able to make you any deal later, my response is always, don't give me the time to think carefully and to consult others, my answer is no. That's no matter how much I like the salesperson. Now, what I don't do is, I don't, I don't ask the car dealer to fire the salesperson, and I don't call the police to arrest the car dealer. But I don't make a deal under pressure, and I hope you won't either. My observation is that Mr. Plackinger and Mr. Garcia have a significant conflict, I regret that conflict, it verges on heartbreaking. I do not know if these two need a divorce lawyer or not, but I do know they need a skilled mediator in order to work together in a way that the people of Pacific County don't suffer.
And that is fine.
The conflict is spurring everyone, and the conflict must end with mediation. I encourage you to get that process started, to take no action quickly. I've given more detail, and the bottom line is, it's a whole lot easier to break something than it is to build something. And I don't think that's a conservative or a moderate or progressive thing, it's just a matter of leadership and public administration. So, slow this down, whatever you decide. So slow this down, whatever you decide, do it carefully with a lot of public input. And I thank you very much, every one of you has taken responsibility for our citizens.
Is it okay if she sits there?
We honor your service, and we want this to be right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Kelly Beach? You're unmuted, Kelly, we can't hear you.
Thank you for the time. I wanted to just put in a couple of quick notes, and piggybacking on a lot of people, and a lot of people have made their comments and opinions felt very passionately, and I think that speaks volumes. My number one concern, me personally as a citizen of Pacific County, is have any of you on that panel put yourself in their shoes, the position of the COs, the deputies? Have you even been up in the jail, and have, to what extent? Do you know what they do on a daily basis? I know what they tell you they do, but do you actually know and understand? Because I can guarantee you, you could not go up there right now and do their job. Moving forward, not back, is a better solution, so I would implore you to, if nothing else, dissolve the idea of moving forward with this, I'm just going to say this little witch hunt, sorry, I know that's negative, I'm not trying to be negative, but that's how it feels, and either table it, or sit down like adults, per my letter, and talk about this in a little more fair diplomatic way. This whole, again, blindside, it's been used probably five or six times, that's how it feels, it is such a negative on you as a panel, that I have no respect for the decisions at hand. At the very beginning of Mr. Garcia's time and time as a sheriff here, I worked for the Chinook Observer. He and his team came into my office right after his election, being voted in and everything, and I can honestly say I was not impressed. I do not work for the Chinook Observer anymore, I was laid off this summer, to which I worked at the jail for the summer as a cook. With all of that in hand, and all of that time going in between, I can honestly tell you that that administration, that sheriff's office, everyone that's come in, including my husband as the deputy sheriff CO, has done a 180. I have been treated with nothing but respect, kindness, a family unit has formed with the other COs. When I moved, some of those COs came and helped me move. Sheriff has been to my house, he shakes hands, he hugs, there's family dynamics there, that wasn't there at the beginning, and I am now eating crow because of that, and the first one to admit it. So thank you to all the COs, thank you to the sheriff. If you get rid of Mr. Parker, that's a huge mistake right there. I don't know what you guys are thinking on that one, that's just a bunch of crap. Mental health, they are not mental health professionals up there, are you? Don't think so. There's other points, there's a million other points that I could piggyback off on a lot of what people have said. You've heard the arguments, you've heard the passion behind it, table it or get rid of it.
And that is time.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Looks like Whitney is next, could you say your full name, Whitney, please? You're still muted, is Whitney still there? Oh, there you go.
My name is Whitney Smith. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I am a resident of Menlo, and we moved here like two and a half years ago, and this was, the first time we were able to vote here was during, was when Sheriff Garcia was running for sheriff, and I, me and my family, voted for him. We think he's done a great job of community outreach, and, you know, you know who Sheriff Garcia is, I have no idea who my commissioners are. Mr. Doyle, you're my commissioner, and I have never seen you, I've looked you up on the county website. But I would like to remind you that you need to listen to your voters, you need to listen to your constituents. It's really important that you guys take your job very seriously, because you're not guaranteed that position next time. And, you know, we vote for you, and we're going to remember the decision that you make today. This is not in the benefit of the county, this is not in the benefit of the people, you are adding an additional layer, so there's not going to be accountability. Right now, we can go to Sheriff Garcia, you can voice your complaints, and you know you will be heard, and that is not going to happen. You are wanting to add, you can find funds to do this, but you can't find funds to get help and healthcare in the jail? That doesn't make sense to me. This seems like a retaliatory action, it seems very sneaky. I'm sure you guys weren't expecting to sit here for three hours the day after Christmas to hear some very angry people and frustrated people that voted for you. Olson, you just got voted in again, but, you know, RCW 29A, 56110, we can run a recall, and I am willing to assist in any effort that, if that needs to be done, because it's very clear what the people want, like the person a few people ahead of me, slow down, listen. Your job is to listen to us, and to, yes, make the hard decisions, but it's very clear what, that we do not want this right now, and we need more information, and what this, this should, slow down. And I just want to, obviously, make it very clear that I am against what you're proposing. And Mr. Plankinger, you're not a voted, you're not a voted unofficial. So I would also encourage the commissioners to think about who you appoint
And that is time.
in these positions. All right, thank you, bring your phone.
Jordan Manchester?
I'm sorry, it's tough to hear, is it Jordan Manchester?
That's what I said.
Sorry, man.
That's okay.
We only hear part of what's being said here on Zoom
I'm sorry.
in between and the transitions. Thank you very much for holding this meeting, my name is Jordan Manchester, I'm in Ilwako. Really quick, I have a lot of respect for all of the officials in this room and in this situation. As the chair of the Democrats of Pacific County, I've had a chance to meet most of you, and as someone who does go to a lot of community events, I will say that I have seen all of you there, and have talked with most of you there, so for a lot of folks that say you only see the sheriff, I have talked with the county commissioners at public events as well, so that does happen, and they are out there. Sheriff Garcia has been very polite every time I've talked with him, and I've seen his good side as he's working with the public. I would also say that, from what I've been hearing folks say today, is that a lot of these speakers have taken this on very personally, when I don't believe that that's where we should be coming from, we should be looking at this specifically as what's being presented, and why the situation occurred. And as one speaker said earlier, it seems to be a communication issue between Sheriff Garcia and the county leadership that needs to be addressed. I think when people take this personally as if it's a reflection negatively on the vote for Sheriff Garcia, that is not really specifically what needs to be focused on here. The problems that have occurred are considerable, as they've been detailed in the newspaper. There are reasons to be concerned, there has been a death, whether or not people want to dismiss it because it was a suicide, the litigation factor needs to be taken very seriously. And I, for one, do think that the timing of this has negatively worked against the county commissioners, because the limited timeframe has basically made it where only Sheriff Garcia has been able to rally his supporters on this, and has been able to basically control the narrative in the public without people hearing specifics from the county commissioners or the county leadership. So to say that the people all support the sheriff and don't support this effort is not accurate, because most of the people don't know this is happening. It's right after Christmas, most folks are checked out, they don't want to be thinking about this yet, so the public doesn't really know. There needs to be more information to the public at large, and it really seems to be a communication issue that needs to be worked on regardless of whether or not the Department of Corrections gets established. And thank you all very much for your time, and have a good day.
Thank you. Jennifer Manchester? Jennifer Manchester?
Sorry, sorry, this is Jennifer.
Oh, okay.
Talking through Jordans, because I can't get mine unmuted.
That's fine.
Jennifer Manchester, I'm a resident of Ilwako. We're full-time residents, we've got family, we work here. I really appreciate the opportunity this week, I appreciate everyone's passion, and it is beautiful to see a community engaged with what's happening. Just to note, part of what cuts out online is because everybody's applauding in the room, and it cuts out the microphone, it's a technology thing. And I want to remind everyone that many of you elected at least a third of our Board of Commissioners. So, you know, our county commissioners are here working for us as well, and the adversarial nature between them and Sheriff Garcia, I think, is very much due to Sheriff Garcia's approach and lack of upfront communication with the commissioners. I'm very frustrated to see Garcia position himself behind Mr. Plankinger, and it seems a very interesting position as the argument is laid out, to be standing against the person making it, and that's noted, I think. Jennifer Garcia has worked very well as a politician in this situation, and has stacked the room with supporters, and I appreciate many of the sentiments, I agree with many of the sentiments that are being expressed. I hate the adversarial nature between them, and I really encourage the commissioners to listen to the fact that there are a lot of people who are asking you to slow down. I agree, it needs to be slowed down, and I hope no official decision is made today, and that you take the time to do some public outreach on this topic from your side, so that the whole story can be understood by the whole population as much as possible before you make such a big decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Stephanie Nack, I wanted to...
Yeah, I want to clarify a statement I misspoke earlier. Paul, I apologize, I said that you had expressed to us that your interest was not with the people, but in protecting the county government, I was incorrect. That was actually Marie Guernsey, the risk manager for the county, who had said that. What you told me was that you don't take notes and you don't write anything down because then it, for plausible deniability. So, I apologize, I mistook the two statements, and I do want to be clear that I was not intending to put words in your mouth there.
Heather Ittika? Heather, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
My name is Heather Ittika, I am a South Pacific County resident, and I'll be very brief today. I plugged in via Zoom today with the intent to just listen and take in information from the commissioners as it was presented to us. I also watched and listened to Sheriff Garcia's town hall meeting on Tuesday. Just a side comment, I do appreciate the opportunity from both to attend remotely. It gives us an opportunity to begin to hear both sides of the story, and like with most stories, each side has their own perceptions and perspectives, and somewhere in the middle lies the truth. I was surprised that this suggestion was coming up for resolution the day after Christmas with seemingly little to no notice to the public, when I learned of sheriff's, of the sheriff's town hall meetings. I was surprised by some of the details shared this morning during the statement at the beginning of the meeting, and I have, I have to be honest to say that I, one, support Sheriff Garcia, and two, I also support common sense and what makes the most sense. I don't feel that we've been given an opportunity to determine what makes the most sense here. To me, this all seems very hurried, and to be honest, the timing doesn't quite pass the sniff test. If your proposal is truly meant for the benefit of the Pacific County residents, then I suggest that you push the pause button on this, and give those residents time to be provided and review the details for and against, so that we can have a knowledgeable assessment of the situation. There were some very good questions asked and points raised by other attendees during the course of this meeting, and I would like to see those addressed and answered by both the sheriff's office and the Board of Commissioners prior to coming to any final decisions on the matter. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Richard Rubio? Richard, did you hear it? Can you unmute? There you go.
Very good, thank you. Commissioners of Pacific County, my name is Richard Rubio. My wife and I moved to Pacific County four years ago, after semi-retiring from the Riverside County District Attorney's Office as the Government Relations Officer, as well as I sit on the executive staff for the Riverside District Attorney. On a side note, I would like to say that Riverside County is the 10th largest county in the United States. The problems you face in this county are no different than the ones that I work in, but our elected officials have learned to work together. I ask you, our elected Pacific County Commissioners, to keep our elected sheriff, Daniel Garcia, in charge of the Pacific County Jail. Work together to improve the conditions of the jail. Do the right thing if you truly are listening to the people of Pacific County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe we have two more online, Jerry Phillips? Jerry, can you unmute?
Can you hear me now?
We can, thank you.
Okay, County Commissioner, I appreciate your time, and allow me to speak for a couple minutes. I've lived in Pacific County for many years, I'm also a former city council member of Long Beach, and also mayor of Long Beach. The reason I'm calling in is because of the fact that my support is between, behind the county commissioners and their effort that they're doing. There's a lot of things that have been brought up, and things that say bring more time for the community to understand all the facets. It's going to be almost impossible for the whole community to understand... It's going to be almost impossible for the whole community to understand and look into this whole thing. The other thing is the fact that, uh, I voted for Sheriff Garcia when he ran for office. The things that I've learned over the years working with him and his officers and stuff, he's got a great department, but the thing is, I just don't believe he relies enough on the Chief, uh, Chief of Police, they have many more years of policing experience and so he does really well with the community, talking to the community, but I don't feel that he really works well in working things out with the other law enforcement agencies. And I really believe that the, um, several issues that we face in the jail system need to be resolved and I do understand the insurance is one of the biggest driving factors of this, also finances. If you look across our state of all the finances and things that are going on. So, again, just real quick, quickly and short, that's all I want to say because I know everyone's been sitting there for quite a while and, uh, again, I just appreciate you gentlemen making my statement. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Um, our last person online is iPhone Two.
It's a funny name.
If you could unmute and, um, give us your name, please.
My name is Martha Donaldson and I'm a resident of Long Beach, Washington.
Thank you.
And I too voted for the sheriff. However, in watching his behavior and the way the department has acted the last few days has been rather disappointing to me. Um, I think it's been very intimidating for those of us who trust the commissioners and the jobs that they are doing and they are also elected. I think that there's far more information into this than what we understand and I agree with the gentleman who just spoke as well. Um, I think it's very important to talk to, that we get, that, um, the commissioners know how the other departments are feeling, how the other city aides, how the Steve Longbeach, maybe the Steve Raymond are feeling on this issue. And I, um, also think that those of us who aren't part of the group that has been encouraged to attend this meeting might be intimidated by the fact that so many of the sheriffs are there and that our voice may be, um, speaking out against is a little more intimidating and don't have that problem, tend to speak my mind. But I think that we, we also elected the, um, commission and they know, they have been doing a great job as far as I'm concerned with this, this county with the limited budget that we have and our attitude about, um, raising taxes. And so I think that, um, I think that all voices need to be heard and I just think this situation has created some intimidation for those of us who agree with the commission. There's been a lot of voices supporting the sheriff and it's not that I didn't support him, I voted for him. But I've just listened to other agencies, I've watched as the emergency management asked to be removed from their, from under the Sheriff's Department, the 911 operators and the same. There's a reason those agencies have asked to be removed from under the sheriff and I think that, um, it would be whoofus to maybe take a second look and, and look for some understanding in that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our public comment, both in the room and, I know, both in the room and online, I believe. Um, and then, so the sheriff have the first time till the end, so we'll go to the sheriff now and then after that, we're gonna take a, like a five-minute break, I don't know anybody else, why I go to the bathroom. Um, so Sheriff?
Okay. So to start, uh, again, thank everybody for being here, um, whether you're in favor of it or against it, um, thank everybody for being here. I'd like to be clear to, to address that concern that we're intimidating. Um, I was asking for all input, for or against. Um, so, uh, yeah, uh, the intent was not to intimidate anybody and I apologize if you feel intimidated. Uh, we are all here for you and as I, I don't know if you heard in the beginning, um, how part of my responsibility is to suppress a phrase and insurrection, so part of us being here is to ensure that everybody stays calm and cordial and this doesn't turn into, um, some of the things you see online. So, um, the, uh, so the jail has been neglected for decades and only until, uh, you guys put me here, um, have the items that needed addressing started to get addressed. Uh, it was stated before that, uh, when something is brought to me, I look into it. Well, that is the truth. Uh, I only have so much bandwidth, so things take time and everything that has been brought to my attention does get looked at. So either one of a few things occurs, either you tell me, I put it on my plate and I look into it and, uh, corrective action goes forth, or you tell me, I look into it and then I collect information and I recognize that you did not have the full story, so I turn around and I give you the full story. Uh, the only things that I can't share with you are ongoing investigations. Everything else, I've been extremely transparent to the claims that, uh, I'm not, I, uh, I'll continue to work on it, uh, but, uh, I'm telling you everything that we're doing because I report up, I report to the people. Uh, I tell you what we're doing and why we're doing it. Uh, there are all kinds of, uh, uh, concerns that still exist. You are right. Uh, there are not enough of us to address everything that there is to do, not enough of us to do the work. I've been very uber-clear about that, uh, since the beginning. So, under this administration, uh, yeah, I'm grateful that the Board of County Commissioners have applied the 1.3 million dollars to address the construction in the jail. Uh, that was, took a long time to, to get that going and a part of that was us working with the Jim Walsh in our, uh, state's legislature to secure a grant, to be able to supplement some of that money, uh, which we secured and, um, as Paul stated, uh, he helped us get that. I take help from everywhere that we can get it. Uh, I've never claimed to be a grant writer nor know everything. My, uh, administrative naivete shows at times. So, uh, uh, so there were all kinds of concerns. So to address the issue that we've spent more than previous administrations, yes we have, it costs money to do what we're doing. And, uh, uh, it was a risk mitigation factor to purchase new body armor so that it's no longer expired, to upgrade the Corrections deputies from a Level 2 body armor, which is a lower grade, to, uh, Level 3 of what they currently, uh, wear. It's, uh, it's, uh, disheartening to know that they were looked at essentially as like a lesser tier, uh, individual and that is wrong. Um, the Corrections, the jail is vital to the, uh, law enforcement, uh, and criminal justice system within all of Pacific County, it is the only one. It is crucial, it's important. That is why, from my perspective and knowledge now, of which is not just my own, but my entire command staff, of which holds over 70 years of law enforcement experience in Pacific County alone, plus my 24 minutes, so 70 years and 24 minutes, um, is a long time. In addition to that, we seek out, uh, help from WASPIC and from, uh, the other sheriffs in the state. I've, uh, solicited input from other sheriffs, uh, in regard to all of these matters, every single thing. The medical in the jail, that was a, that is a, the greatest concern. We've worked tirelessly to attempt to find a solution. Uh, Dr. Kundoff and, uh, Mary Ann Murray were a part of that seeking out. Things didn't work out, I'm not in charge of, uh, contracting and I hope that we can re- re-engage going forward as now everybody realizes that is a major problem and we need that addressed. Uh, we work with, um, the Department of Health of Pacific County, uh, for all of the, um, re-entry issues and mental health and, and all of the, uh, groups that come in and, uh, provide services to the inmates. Um, I care greatly about this team, of which we finally now, two years later, have a solid team. So I thank, I thank Paul in doing this because it has solidified the, uh, the existence of this team. We are all one team now. Uh, took a long time to get here, but we are here and we're working to, uh, do and address everything that needs addressing and get better as we go along. Um, one of the problems with that is all of these things require money and that's where, uh, myself and the commissioners and Paul and, uh, Risk Management need to work better together. I don't deny that, uh, there are rifts between us. Um, I point out that they started from the very beginning, of which I came into this, I agree, quite naive, about, uh, uh, how county government works. I only know civics, I only know that three separate parts of a county government, much like the state's government, much like the federal government. Uh, so, yeah, there's administrative processes that, uh, these individuals had to teach us, but I also had a full team of people that were parallel aware to how these things worked and we've been working very hard to learn them all. Um, along the way, it seems as though we've been led astray, allowed to, to fail when a roadblock was ahead of us. Um, and here we think, all we know is what, what they're telling us and what we're seeking to learn about how the process works. Um, so, uh, firearms, it's been, it's been mentioned, firearms was atrocious when it took over, uh, the training level and we've increased the training across the board on patrol, on civil and, uh, in the jail. In regard to, um, the other two elements being removed from the Sheriff's Office, if I had the bandwidth at the time, I would have fought 911 leaving as well, just like this, uh, because I think it's wrong and there's a lot of things that need addressing and, uh, I felt that we could have addressed those things, but it wasn't fast enough for them, so they, uh, uprose and they're no longer apart. Uh, so those things are being addressed, uh, at the same time. Uh, the focus started when I took office on patrol, well, because they're the base and again, I only have so much bandwidth, so we focused on that to build, um, a solid foundation. After that, uh, the focus then went to civil and we, uh, uh, worked to fill vacancies and, uh, get, uh, training that was missing. And then, after that was the jail. Um, the focus is still currently on the jail, there's still construction going on. So in regard to, um, the issues that exist between this office and other police agencies, um, I, I have attempted to work with them. We have disagreements and for those things, they've, uh, helped support these efforts to undermine, uh, all of the, uh, the progress forward. So those, two of those relationships are on pause. Uh, the other relationship is quite, quite well and we work very well, even when they disagree. So, um, to the claim that, uh, I don't work with people, that's not true and I take disagreements pretty, uh, as gracefully as I can, uh, but I do take the disagreement and I chew on it and I let it help direct the direction that we go. So, um, when I first took office, uh, we requested an outside agency to do that first investigation. So to the claim that it was already being done, I had no knowledge, I don't know what or, you know, organization or, or agency was doing that, that was not shared with me. Um, what, what agency was it?
Lewis County, as I stated in my prepared remarks.
Lewis County, okay, well, it was Thurston County that did it for us.
The death investigation, Thurston did the internal.
All right. So, um, we, uh, we reached out, we didn't have a capability and there was not a, uh, Internal Affairs Unit within this agency, nor had there been for a very long time, if at all. Um, we asked WASPIC to come in, the Washington, uh, Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs, to come in and give us a, an overview and an assessment to provide us input on what we need to address. Again, I hadn't ran a jail before, I had done detainee operations in the military, but, uh, that's a little bit different than, uh, correctional, uh, facilities in the United States. So I sought out, uh, from experts to come and give us an overview. At the time, a, uh, investigation was being done, so, uh, it was, uh, done, um, cursorily and with the promise, uh, to come back later for a full and official overview after we had set things, uh, straight with all their input. So, um, second, the, uh, the, the second death. Along the timeframe of these two years, we've created a whole bunch of different divisions of which haven't existed in this agency for a very long time. Uh, one of them was Internal Affairs, we now have a proper Internal Affairs. So when this occurred, I sought out and I said, "Hey, get to work." And they started. And then I told the people what was going on and then you guys told me, "Hey, we want an outside agency." And so I listened and we asked, I asked the sheriff, "Hey, I need a outside agency to come in." And they said, "Hey, right now, that's on, uh, Gray's Harbor County plate, so ask them." So I called Sheriff Darren Wallace, I told him what we had, I asked him to, uh, come in and do the investigation, he said, "Yes, we will. Uh, give me some time, as we've got a lot on our plate right now, we'll shuffle things around and get back to you." So that is currently going on and it's toward the end of the conclusion. So upon the conclusion of that, that will all be provided and then, uh, to the, uh, review panel, it would have only benefited this office had we gone forward to do that review panel and the extension was granted by me, the executive, uh, to make that decision. That was on the suggestion that it would be best for the county for, uh, litigation purposes to minimize the zeros. So I obliged. At the time, I was working on trying to have a good relationship with the county government as we had hit the ground headbutting. We have a fundamental disagreement. When I say the county, I mean every living soul within the borders of this county. With some, when they say the county, they mean the county government. So, uh, that's in lies part of our issue. I, one, welcome a, uh, mediator to sit down and talk, talk everything out, that'd be great. Um, I have agreed to it in the past and I guess I will. In regard to not wanting, uh, risk mitigation operating within the sheriff's office, that is a false claim. Uh, I've sought out a direct relationship with the county's risk pool and we routine, um, on this matter, I reached out to them and they endorse, uh, proposal that instead of creating this whole new department, which could incur a huge cost, uh, create division and, uh, potentially slow things down for a long time to come and retard the progress we have made, instead of doing that, what if we funded a risk manager internal to the sheriff's office, since it is the biggest liability? I don't disagree that it's a ma- massive liability. I propose that we, uh, add an FTE, uh, a full-time, uh, risk manager just for the sheriff's office. They will work directly with the risk pool and communicate with you guys. Um, I think that is a far more astute, uh, proposal and, uh, very fiduciary in managing the people's money. So, um, and again, to iterate, the county's risk pool, uh, endorses that idea. So, uh, if you didn't know, in my budget request of which is not, uh, approved yet, I think we're gonna get to it at, at this meeting, um, I had requested two additional deputies on the road and two additional deputies in the jail. Again, because to manage risk and there's not enough of us to do the work that exists, The, uh, the medical is the greatest danger that exists within the jail. We only have the hospital to rely on. I will also point out that the, the RCW reads in such a manner, I don't know verbatim, but it, it, it outlines that whatever exists out in town shall exist in the jail. And I think we all know that medical in Pacific County is not as good as it should be based off of we cannot pay providers to stay here. We get good providers and then they move on to greener grass. Um, we are very lucky to have some individuals that are in the county that choose to live here and, uh, I think it would be, uh, quite awesome if we could work out contracts to get those things going. So, since I've taken office, we have addressed every single issue that, uh, that needs to be addressed. We have not, uh, been able to apply action to all of them because there's just far too many. Uh, but, uh, what you guys hired me to do and sit in this seat is to prioritize and execute. And I've been pretty, uh, transparent in regard to what I've, uh, outlined and assessed are those priorities. And again, I'm not making these decisions in a vacuum, um, I am advised by many, many, many people, but you put the, uh, decision-making on me and that's what I'm doing and I'm being very transparent about what the decisions are. More input is better than, than less input. Again, I, I, I thank you guys for sitting here and taking that. Um, I did not request only my supporters come and be here, I asked anybody to come and be here. Anybody that wanted to say something, feel any kind of way about it. So I'm grateful that there were some online that were willing to, uh, address that and the gentleman that asked me a direct question, uh, unfortunately, hopefully he got online on his way home, uh, but, uh, uh, I'm grateful for them to show up, we need that. Um, I've been working very hard to wrangle this county to recognize that we are all one people. It doesn't matter the color of our skin or the music we listen to or any other arbit- It doesn't matter the color of our skin or the music we listen to or any other arbitrary factor, it only matters our actions, the way we carry ourselves and, and work with other people, how we treat others. I will admit, false. I am not perfect. And at times, I have pissed this man off, Paul Plackenger. I have said things that were not pleasant and I've apologized to him for those. And I promised him that I would work to not throw in digs just to get a scope. And I'm working on that. I am. I don't mean that as a joke. I don't, I mean it very sincerely. I recognize that him and I don't see eye to eye and that it is crucial that we work together because he's the funnel to the commissioners. And it, it's important. So I'm working on that. This decision, though, I am adamantly opposed. One, because in this seat, it is the only seat in the entire county to balance and weigh all throughout the entire county. I am not saying that everybody here works for me. That is not what I'm saying, Chinook Observer, I see you online. That's not what I'm saying. But what I am saying is I oversee and I look at all of the, the crime and the action that occurs throughout the entire county to include the municipalities. And I'm not just the sheriff of the unincorporated, I am the sheriff to everybody, every soul that exists within these borders. And so I have to balance and weigh everything. So a part of that was minimizing the population in the jail because we do not have the staff to support cramming it full, as has been done in the past. I took it under advisement from former corrections deputies that used to work there and the current ones. And we, under advisement from WASPIC and their outlook of how many would be preferable to manage a large population, we reduced it. And I didn't make that decision on my own. In fact, that was already written in policy. All I did was hold to it. A similar thing in regard to the firearms program. I didn't, when I first took office, contrary to what people have claimed, I didn't raise the bar, I just held it. And the fact that many didn't pass tells me that the bar wasn't held before. So what I have done, since we've taken this office, is we've done the right thing all the time, no matter what, even if no one's looking and just like now, even if we're standing alone. So I get that there's a whole bunch of support, but in this matter, I hope that I'm not standing alone. But I'm willing to do so because it's the right thing. So also, to touch on the direct accountability, there have been many instances of family members or former inmates that have brought issues to, to my plate. And I've addressed every single one of them. The, the last individual that passed away in the jail, I've spent time with his family directly. I sat in a room, myself and Commander Parker, surrounded by his family. And I took their, their hurt feelings and hate and discontent and then talked everything out, explained everything that I could. And we left there very cordially. And in fact, they're in support of the sheriff's office continuing to grow. I don't know where they sit on this matter in particular, as we haven't been able to communicate on it, as this was a short timeframe and my effort was spent spreading the word. But I, I look forward to their input on what they think. That said, there is no greater group of people currently that care about serving the people than the group we have now. And it's taken two years to create this. And we've gained a whole lot of momentum. There's still more to do. If you leave it under me, we will continue to do those things and I will continue to be transparent and tell you where we're at and what we're sitting and continue to chip away at all of these things. The inmates, it is a responsibility that if you remove their rights, that is placing them under arrest, that you are responsible for their health, welfare, and safety. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. It does not matter what they did or how egregious, does not. They are innocent until proven guilty in a court of law and that matters. So once they're in our custody, we do care. So the claims that those guys don't care, those guys don't care, they're referencing the days of old. Those days are gone. It took a long, hard time to, there's been a lot of turnover in the office, but everybody here, most everybody here now, is on this path. So we do care about the inmates because they are citizens. They are our neighbors. They're not going to live in there forever and one day, we're going to see them out in town. And routinely, we do. So it is nice at times to speak with them and they're, they're cordial and they don't hate us. So this is people overwatching people. It's not corrections and criminals. It is not, it's not civilians and law enforcement. I don't refer to you as civilians because that would then make me a combatant if I'm calling you a civilian. And I'm no longer a combatant. That life is behind me. So what I want to work now is to serve everybody within this county. The larger politics are way different here. And what I care about are all the matters, all the issues that matter in Pacific County. And we're working very hard to do that. So I, that is not a claim that they're not working to do that. I believe that they are. I pray that they've taken and weighed all matters. I think there are a lot of ancillary and ripple effects that are not considered in the claims listed in Paul's report. One of them, Jerry, you said that there was a workshop on this. When was that?
Which issue, Sheriff?
The resolution?
Oh, I think he was talking about...
When it was presented to us on the 18th?
Yeah.
Okay, we got it. So I would have loved to have had an actual workshop on this matter and known it was coming so that we could have provided you all of the evidence of the counties that have done this. There are 39 counties in the state. Thirty-eight of them have elected sheriffs and there's, I think it's four or five that have done this. So the notion that most counties are doing this is wrong. Some of those counties don't have jails because they're too small or because they do a regional one, of which I disagree with the idea of a regional one for us as well because that brings a whole nother level of, of issues that are not a good thing. But this letter from the sheriff of Benton County clears, states it very clearly that they had to deal with and what I presented as something we will have to deal with. All of those units that I mentioned that we've created would have to be put on pause, especially losing that man over there. So this letter spells out exactly what happened in Benton County. He's referencing my letter, my initial letter, the day after I was told that this was presented, I wrote a letter to the people and I posted it. That letter was to everybody, not just my supporters. And so this letter spells out exactly what happened in Benton County when the Benton County commissioners took the jail operations from the sheriff's office in 2019. We immediately had to dismantle our proactive gang team to support the courts for security and arrests. This change will have an immediate effect on a number of deputies available for the duties. We had to pull resources from other areas that still have not been backfilled five years later. Lots of lessons learned here in Benton County. I hope those making the decisions look at the big picture. So I do know that it's been referenced that Clark County did the same thing two years ago. Clark County's operations are still not smooth to this day. I spoke with that sheriff when I first heard wind of this and it, it's not, it's not a great thing. That said, Clark County Jail is a different animal. He, he referenced to me in my talk, we are finally now down, under a population of 500 inmates. That is a way different animal. They have more staff than, than, than we do in the entire sheriff's office, just in management positions. That's, that's a different, we, I don't think that's a fair comparison. Click-attack county, there's a similar political situation in that county that has contributed to this and I, my feeling is that it's not going to turn out to be a good thing. But again, there are terrible situations that occur in all correctional facilities. Also, changing whom is overseeing it is not a mitigation by itself. What that does is that provides more level of control to the legislative body, but that is not a mitigating factor by itself. Terrible things happen regardless of who's in charge. How you respond to them, I think, is a more appropriate measure. And if you believe my actions to be naive and mishandled, I, I would love to see the whole case. So, so all of the extra spending that we've done in the sheriff's office is a risk mitigation. In my 22-year career in the Navy, I've lived in risk mitigation for, for life and death with people's lives. I scuff at it, if you will, that's what I've done. In wartime, on my nine deployments, I've had people's lives in my hands. We do this on, on a routine basis. What I think they're referencing is that my administrative naivete of process. That does not change the fact that we have addressed all risk that needs to be addressed. Me being public by itself is a claim of risk. But I don't like that claim because we are a public office. Everything I do is public and should be. So me telling you what is going on and then telling you what I need, in this instance, we need a radar system in the cells to monitor movement and respiration, all those things. We need a set of wrist bracelets for those that matrix out at a higher risk than others. We need, of which, the individual that, that last died would not have scored high enough to put a wristband on, but had we had the radar system in the cell, it would have alerted us sooner. So that said, I need those things. What else do I need? I need more deputies. What else do I need? I need for everything not to be a battle. Standing in front of that, just like, mind blows me. I, I get that sometimes I can be off-putting because I say things that are not nice to say. I don't, I work real hard anyway to not say things that are unnecessary. I've got a lot of people telling me, why don't you lay it out on the table? Well, because it's unnecessary, in my belief, and because I have to walk above that. One, to earn your respect and two, to prove to you through my action that I legitimately care about everything getting better. It has nothing to do with me. The claims that I'm just selfish and grandstanding and a politician, I think I'm a terrible politician because I'm not rubbing anybody's shoulders to make them feel better. I don't, I think I'm a terrible politician because I, I don't capitulate. That said, I'm not, I don't think that they're politicians either. They're people, they're citizens just like us and they stepped up to do a job of which is uncomfortable, hyper-uncomfortable. This is not easy. And I, again, I thank you guys for doing it. I've been seeking this out, all, me getting the what for throughout the entire county for two years now. And it is not easy. I think I'm a little more used to it now, when people give me the what for and tell me all the things. But oftentimes, I, I think they're just misunderstood. They only heard one narrative. So also, to the claim that I cut off communication with the sheriff observer, I did not. What I did is they no longer got to get direct responses from me. I, in fact, sent two of my staff to PIO school to be the filter between them. And they have direct access and routinely text message them all the time. So that is Commander Parker being one of them, of which if he goes, I lose one of those. And the other one is Chief Civil Deputy Holly Belucci. So I did not cut off communication. In fact, I made it more succinct in the manner of they will get a faster response. What was happening is they needed to print or get a response by Monday morning and I would get an email at like Saturday at whatever time or Friday at 7:00 PM and say, hey, I need your response by Monday or else. Well, or else what? Is that a threat? I mean, you're going to print what you print, so print it. I will tell you what, what is truth. And I work real hard to try and feed them a correction when something is inaccurate, of which oftentimes is. But those corrections either are met with scrutiny, that I'm just playing hardball or, or being disagreeable or, or fighting. But in my outlook, I believe that the truth matters. And so I want the whole truth out there. And I also get, there's my story, his story, and then the truth. Well, I want all the information out there and let everybody decide, mainly all of you. So I, I conclude my time. I thank you guys for listening to all of this. I pray that you have a lot to weigh and think and I hope that it is denied. But that is a decision on you. You guys control my budget in the manner of approval for the, the next year. But after it's given to me, I, I make reasonable decisions on how it's spent. And we're not, we're not misspending funds at any juncture. And if you have a question about why, please ask and I will tell you. There's a reason by, behind every purchase. And, yeah, so, thank you guys very much.
I think we're in recess for like five minutes.
Sounds good.
I'd just like to say if there was a workshop created over this...
At this point, I believe...
There wasn't.
No, I'd just like to say if there's going to be a workshop created over this issue, I'd sure like to be involved in it and participate in it.
All workshops and board commissioners are advertised on the county website.
I believe that concludes public comment. Is there anyone there that would like to speak before we close public comment?
Can I ask one thing?
Sure.
When was the last time anybody came up to jail from here that...
I've been to jail multiple times. I've been to jail multiple times.
You don't need it in here.
I was just trying to interrupt you.
I understand. I know you have a work with that. I wouldn't know if they've been... Me, I don't, I left the academy two Sundays ago. I was told by all my coworkers, this isn't going to be long, that the sheriff never ever came up to the jail. And he's came up and spent two hours with me, just talking to me about the academy, getting me ready for it. You came up, but we're making these proposals for things and these risk management decisions. The plumbing was never fixed. There's, it's leaking in Sheriff Garcia's office. Every time somebody takes a 15-minute shower, water runs down the walls, water runs through the pipes. So the claim that the plumbing was fixed and that things are in motion and being fixed is wrong. Doors are great help, yes, but it's a bandit on a broken leg for a building that was built in 1984 with no renovations besides new doors, a couple million years later.
The plumbing has been an issue where...
Really, perfect?
Anyway, we need to close public comment now. Sorry. And so we're going to take like a five-minute break. Okay, we're just right here. Okay, well, recess till one o'clock and then, and then we'll come back and move forward in some manner.
All right. Recession till 1:00. Thank you, guys.
Leave us on.
Are you hungry?
Yeah.
Are you hungry?
Yes.
I'm just going to go to Pioneer.
I mean, I miss PSD, Casey.
Yeah, absolutely. Here, take this, don't, don't take mine, don't take this.
Do you want something? Do you want my girl to grab you something? Well, I think I'm going to run to the store. I'm getting kind of hungry.
Yeah.
No, I got money. You could stay if you would like to. Um, you could stay if you would like to.
We should just prop that door, honestly.
I was telling them to prop that open, but it doesn't say prop, I guess.
Yeah.
So, for the suicide position, do I need to send another?
Um, have we gotten granted lateral?
We have gotten granted...
Get him an email.
I will, yeah.
Yes, you will. And as soon as I have it, we're right through. Because I don't have a testing fee, and I'm just waiting for it so I can open the testing fee. So, once I get it, just transfer. Oh, I know. I'm feeling that.
I went to your office.
The back of my head looks fabulous, I've been reassured. Have you been here the whole time? Are you thirsty? Do you want some water?
No, I haven't, I have everything. I just fed some other people and hydrated them.
I watered other people, I'm making sure you guys covered.
Okay, we're in the sheriff's office. Not beach? Oh, okay. Yeah, beach. I had to introduce myself, I didn't realize. This coach is here.
Guys, surprising there was more issues, there's a lot of wind out there. It's been bad. Wendy, Wendy, Wendy.
Thank you, same.
Hi, I'm going back to my hole.
Say you wanna hang out? So, what I hope people do, right? So, they said they're gonna post whatever letter, you know, they're gonna put that on their website. But it doesn't show any proof. So, I hope people bear with me that you write, because some of the shit is out right. Right, yeah. So, hopefully, people that are in agreement or disagreement, they should trust the...
Which goes my way, because this man had a week to prepare this, like, a couple months. And telling me he went to the airport, he put this thing together, and still lying about it? Like, that's not, that's not fair.
That's, that's conscious, conscious of... You know what I'm just saying?
Can you take napkins?
No, of course not.
I'll grab some.
Those are so def. Sorry. Your hair looks great, though. Yeah.
Make sure everybody gets that.
I'm gonna be back here in a few.
Learned a lot of things from Pam over the last couple days.
Fuctuated between about, you know, where it's at now, 110 to 150.
Yeah, I would've been here right at this point.
Hey, how are you, man?
Good, how are you guys?
It's Sway, please record you to come on. Thank you all for staying around. This is, as all of you have been, is very aware of a very huge decision. We already knew that, but what we are going to do is, because we have some decisions to make, no matter which way we vote on this. And so, we are going to recess until 1:30. And then, you're all welcome to come back. You're all welcome to stay in here if you want to. And then, we will come back and we will decide what we're gonna do on this issue and then move forward with the wrestling agenda because there are things that need to be done before the end of the year. So, I thank you all for your patience, and thank you all for your, for your input and your interaction. And we will see you all here in a little over an hour.
1:30 in 15 minutes.
Yeah, let's do 2:00. I was thinking of this earlier. But let's do 2:00. Thank you.